All right, all right, welcome everyone. We do have a quorum, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. 1.2 Presentation of the Colors. Awesome, and 1.3, we're gonna call for the Pledge of Allegiance. So everybody... Oh, there we go, yes. By Ms. Cardinal City Pageant Contestant Grace Ideligo. Go ahead and lead us on the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Awesome, can we go ahead and give them a round of applause? And that was the Presentation of Colors by Del Vallejo Leadership in STEAM Academy California Cadet Courts, led by Major Benjamin Cervantes from 323rd Jaguar Battalion. So thank you so much for that. Moving on to 1.4 Approval of the Agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Mr. Santos. Vote please. Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. 2.0 Special Presentations and Recognitions. 2.1 National Hispanic Heritage Month. Board of Education will recognize National Hispanic Heritage Month with a cultural presentation highlighting the history, traditions, and contributions of Hispanic Americans who originate from Guatemala. Ms. Raquel Donado, Consul of Guatemala, will share the presentation Guatemala: Rich in Culture and Traditions and give a brief overview that honors the cultural heritage that helps to shape and strengthen our schools and community. Am I passing it over to Ms. Goodwin?
Thank you, President Savaios. Good evening, my name is Mary Rhone Goodwin and I'm the Director of Communications and Community Relations. It is my great honor to welcome you to today's cultural presentation in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, which began yesterday, September 15th, and goes through October 15th. As a district, we take pride in recognizing the rich traditions, histories, and contributions of our Hispanic and Latino communities. This afternoon, we are especially privileged to shine a spotlight on the beautiful country of Guatemala. Guatemala is known for its breathtaking landscapes, vibrant culture, and deep traditions. We are truly honored to be joined by the distinguished representatives from the consulate of Guatemala. Their presence here underscores the strong cultural ties and the shared commitment we have to celebrating diversity, fostering unity, and learning from one another. I kindly ask our board members and superintendent to remain at their seats on the dais during the presentation as I will provide you your cue when it is time to join us on the floor. And with that, please join me in giving a warm welcome to the Guatemalan consul, Ms. Raquel Donado, who will lead us in a special presentation. The podium is yours.
Thank you. Good evening to everybody, my name is Raquel Donado. I'm the consul of Guatemala here in San Bernardino. Actually, I have jurisdiction in San Bernardino and Riverside area. Nice to meet you, everybody. So they are asking me about some traditions and culture of my beautiful country. And my English is not my first language, so I will be using to Alvaro Garcia interpreter. We can... Actually, we have a lot of traditions, but there are like three that are the most important for me and I think to everybody in Latino America because nobody has these special traditions. For example, the number one, the Holy Week in Guatemala, like we call Semana Santa. This is an old week, a special week. This is an important celebration in our country. In any other country, you will see this Semana Santa like Guatemala does. For example, the alfombras. One of the most beautiful Easter traditions is the creation of alfombras. But you won't find this in the family living room. They are made from sawdust, flowers, fruit, palm leaves, and paper, and are laid out in the streets. People work from around 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. using stencil to create the intricate designs. The sawdust has to be constantly sprayed with water to ensure it doesn't fly away. The next day, they are walked over by religious processions. For example, in this slide, I will be saying in Spanish.
So as you can see on that slide, people dress in purple. Those carry the processions and they carry the Christ on the cross. These traditions go back to the colonial times. And they... And they... Our traditions are supported 51% in the Mayan culture.
Thank you, Alvaro. In the next slide, we can see about the barriletes gigantes, giant kites in Guatemala. This is one of the most original festivities of the region with the Festival de los Barriletes Gigantes. In the village of Zumpango in Santiago Zacatepecas, near of Antigua, Guatemala, in November 1st, now as El Dia de Todos los Santos, is celebrated in a very colorful way. The tradition of the barriletes gigantes is born after a legend native of Zumpango, which narrates that every November 1st, some bad spirits come to Zumpango Cemetery to hunt and disturb the resting souls there. As the problem was recurrent, Zumpango inhabitants decided to ask the elders about this phenomenon. Their solution was to force the bad spirits to go away thanks to the noise created by the wind touching pieces of paper. That is how the inhabitants of this village started to make barriletes. In Spanish, it's barriletes, kites in English, that will create peace for the good spirits and avoid unwanted visits. These kites are a mix of art, traditions, and colors, which convey message of unity, love, faith, respect of tradition, and mother nature. Like you can see, this is an example of the giant kites that they are made actually for our Mayan people in a special place in Zumpango. In the another slide, you can see more of these pictures. There is a lot of people that travel to every country to see this special art. And actually, the rest of people, we can make these giant kites as well on this November 1st. And the last, but not least, is about the food. Like you know, all our food in Latin American is delicious. So I want to present to you an special plate that is called fiambre. This special food is eating on El Dia de Todos los Santos, on November 1st and November 2nd. And it's a very special tradition where the families can be reunited on the cemeteries or maybe in their houses just to sharing how the food is important to have and make a special honor to the farmers that can cultivate her own products like fruits, cheeses, vegetables, like you said there. Actually, they are very, very delicious. So this is important in our culture because all in Guatemala is making this special food. And that's it. I think that is the final of the presentation, yes. Thank you. I know that in this district, you have a lot of Guatemalan students or fathers of the students are from Guatemala. So always, we are here to help you and to know how it's about Guatemala and here's special traditions and culture. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much for sharing. And there's a lot of things that I learned today that I didn't know. And there's a lot of similarities with Mexico as well and I'm sure other cultures. 2.2 SB 80.
We're actually going to ask you to come down to take a picture with the consul, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
And that'll be part of our transition for the next item. We do want to thank you, Consul Donado, for the presentation. So we'll ask you to join us in the center here for a photo with our board and our superintendent. Let's give Consul Donado one more round of applause. We also want to thank her mother, Amanda, who's joined us also from Guatemala just for this presentation, I believe. So thank you so much. And we're gonna ask you to remain standing because we have one more recognition tonight. We're going to ask our cabinet members to join us along the ramp here to welcome and recognize the amazing talent we have right here in our district. As part of our program, we are going to honor three extraordinary students from San Bernardino High School, where the Cardinals at. All right. Who have distinguished themselves in the world of theater. These outstanding thespians have not only brought pride to their school, but have also demonstrated the discipline, creativity, and passion that theater demands. Their achievements remind us that the performing arts are more than entertainment. They are powerful expressions of culture, identity, and imagination. So students, when I call your name, please come forward along with your families. We are going to ask our San Bernardino High School principal, Ana Sosa, to join us right here along with their extraordinary teacher, Ms. Olivia Parker. So if you'll come on down as well. And ask our students to line up here on the ramp here. All right. Students, line up here on the ramp, please. Thank you so much. So our first honorary is Natalie Arseniega and we are honoring her for her excellent ranking in contrasting monologue performance at the International Thespian Festival. Right Natalie, join us right here in the center. We're gonna take a picture with our board here. There we go. All right, next up, we have Isabella Escora. She received a superior ranking in hair and makeup design. Your superior ranking in stage management and for your first place ranking in stage management at the International Thespian Festival. Let's give her a round of applause. And last, but certainly not least is a name I certainly remember from our grand opening of that Performing Arts Center at San Bernardino High School. And that is Jubilee Henry. We are honoring her for her superior ranking in solo musical performance at the International Thespian Festival. Congratulations Jubilee. Ready? Students, thank you for showing us the brilliance of student talent and reminding us the importance of supporting the arts and education. Thank you, members of the board, superintendent, cabinet. At this time, please return to your seats at the dais. This concludes this evening's special presentations. I turn the floor over to you, President Savaios.
Awesome, thank you so much. And once again, congratulations. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to 2.3 Resolution declaring California Clean Air Day. And I'm gonna go ahead and ask Ms. Hernandez Garcia if she can go ahead and read this for us, please.
Whereas it is vital that the San Bernardino City Unified School District protect the health and well-being of children who are the future of our community and whereas air pollution contributes to higher rates of cancer and heart and lung disease, which adversely affect health and whereas individual actions such as walking or biking to work, carpooling, not idling vehicles, and not burning hazardous or inappropriate material can directly improve air quality in our region. Therefore, be it resolved, the San Bernardino City Unified School District declares October 1st, 2025, as California Clean Air Day and encourages all schools and offices to participate in activities that promote clean air for all and raise awareness for detrimental effects of air pollution.
Moved. Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Mr. Tillman. Vote please. Mr. Delgado?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. 2.4 Resolution and Recognition of National Custodian Day. I will go ahead and ask Ms. Rosales Medina if she can read that for us, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas National Custodian Day, celebrated annually on October 2nd, was first created in 1985 to recognize and appreciate the countless hours custodians put in daily to ensure schools, offices, and other public places are clean and safe for everyone. And whereas San Bernardino City Unified School District employs 300 custodians who clean 85 school sites and buildings district-wide inside and outside. And whereas custodians play an important role in reducing the spread of bacteria and viruses that could cause illnesses among staff, students, and community members, and the removal of dust, allergens, and other asthma triggers, thus helping to reduce one of the largest causes of student absenteeism in the United States. And whereas custodians are the eyes and ears on school campuses making the rounds aware of anything or anyone out of the ordinary, assuring the doors that doors are secure and that hazard is eliminated and that the learning environment is safe and secure. And whereas it is a time to express appreciation for their diligent efforts, which go beyond mere cleaning to include maintenance and ensuring public health, especially highlighted during public crisis. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education thanks the entire custodial staff for their hard work and dedication to provide a healthy work and safe learning and working environment for the student staff in our district. And be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby proclaims October 2nd, 2025, National Custodian Day and joins the district staff and students to celebrate and recognize their dedication and commitment.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote please. Mr. Delgado?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. 2.5 Resolution Recognizing October as Character Education Month. And I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Delgado if he can read that for us, please.
Whereas the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District welcomes the opportunity to proclaim that the present and future well-being of our society requires an involved, informed, and caring citizenry with good character and whereas character development is first and foremost an obligation of families. But the efforts of faith communities, schools, and youth, civic and human service organizations also play a vital role in fostering and promoting good character. And whereas October 19th, 2025, National Character Counts Week, time to highlight character education and the importance of modeling good character. And whereas October 20th, 24, 2025, is Digital Citizen Week, a time to focus on making safe, ethical, and responsible decisions online. Therefore, it be resolved, the Board of Education joins the California Department of Education in recognizing October as Character Education Month and encourages all students to ensure that the development of strong moral character and the promotion of responsible, ethical, and civic-minded behavior are a part of the curriculum.
Vote.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote please. Mr. Delgado?
Aye.
Mrs. Hernandez Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. 2.6 Resolution Recognizing October as Filipino-American History Month. Can I have Dr. Wyatt read that for us, please?
Thank you, Madam President, my pleasure. Whereas Filipino-Americans are the second largest Asian-American group in the country and the second largest ethnic group in California. And whereas Filipino-American History Month became federally acknowledged in 2009 when the Senate of the 111th Congress passed a formal resolution to recognize Filipino-American history throughout the month of October. And whereas October is significant in Filipino-American history because it marks the first recorded presence of Filipinos- is significant in Filipino-American history because it marks the first recorded presence of Filipinos in what is now the United States on October 18th, 1587, when Filipino sailors came ashore from the Spanish galleon Nuestra Señora de Esperanza and landed in the Moral Bay Area of California. And whereas Filipino-American History Month highlights the economic, cultural, social, and patriotic contributions Filipino-Americans have made in countless ways towards the development of our state and nation, and provides an opportunity to examine Filipino-Americans' history and culture. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education, the San Bernardino City Unified School District does hereby recognize October 2025 as Filipino-American History Month, and calls upon schools, educators, and community to celebrate the history and culture of Filipino-Americans and their historic contributions to the nation by observing the month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. So move.
Again.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Tillman. Vote, please. Mr. Delgado?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 2.7 Resolution Recognizing October as National Bullying Prevention Month. And I will go ahead and ask Mr. Jones if he can read that for us, please.
Whereas October is National Bullying Prevention Month, and the first Monday of October is World Day of Bullying Prevention. Marking October as a time to raise awareness of bullying, which can include verbal, physical, and cyberbullying. And whereas children who are bullied are at increased risk of depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school. And whereas children who witness bullying are also at increased risk for tobacco, alcohol, or other drug use, have increased risk of depression and anxiety, and are more likely to skip school. Therefore, therefore be it resolved that the San Bernardino City Unified School District will work to develop, implement, and monitor policies and programs that foster a positive school climate. And be it further resolved that the, be it further resolved, the Board of Education proclaims its commitment to the prevention of bullying by educating students and staff, exploring solutions, and offering support to students in recognizing October as National Bullying Prevention Month, and October 6th as World Day of Bullying Prevention. Moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Mr. Delgado?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Rosales Medina? Motion carries 3.0 Public Comments, 3.1 Receive Public Comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. So up first, we have Karan Slowbomb? Hello. Can you press the button on the mic?
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for hearing us again. And just again, my name is Karen Slowbomb. I'm from Dvor. I've been there since the early 70s. And I just wanted to discuss again about the, our drinking water in Dvor and our community and Kimbark School. Our community was informed that Kimbark School Elementary has a reverse osmosis water filter in the cafeteria. Does this include all drinking fountains and bathroom faucets? If not, the children are being directly exposed to the nitrates. When was the reverse osmosis water filter installed? Do you believe that because the reverse osmosis water filter was installed, that the San Bernardino City Unified School District does not have to notify the parents or Kimbark School of the do not drink notice because of the high nitrates in the water the school is consuming? Our community has requested numerous public information requests that have been ignored and have not been answered with the documents that were requested. Please advise us to the procedures or to whom we need to speak to obtain our public information request. We want to know exactly what septic system types, locations have been installed since the building of Kimbark Elementary. Since we last talked, since we last talked, what steps has this board taken to address the added contamination of the nitrates from these system, septic systems into our aquifer? As the San Bernardino Unified School District Board does nothing, you continue to contaminate our source of drinking water as your septic systems dump into our aquifer. Our community is respectfully asking the board to care about the health and safety of the children, teachers, staff, and our entire community's drinking water, and act with great urgency to resolve what Kimbark School is helping to create unsafe drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Liz King.
Okay, the green button.
I think it was on.
At your last meeting, one of my other community members read my statement to you, and you did acknowledge it and respond. But do you want me to read from last week, just so that you know what I'm talking about here?
It's actually.
Okay. I have five minutes. Okay. The septic tanks at Kimbark Elementary School are outdated and overused. They're breaking down and contaminating our main water source. It needs to be cleaned up. Our entire community is at risk and drinking unclean water right now. This can't be fixed by any mitigation plan that we might devise. We shouldn't bear this burden, and we cannot afford it or sustain it. But there are solutions. When the school was built, septic tanks had to be used, but now we have advanced treatment systems that will replace septic tanks. ATS systems are digesters that release gray water at just below surface level, so the water is further cleaned by natural percolation. Those old tanks need to be replaced with ATS tanks. Assembly Bill 885 was passed in 2000 and addresses the issue of septic tank contamination in California. This legislation provides access to grants and low-interest loans for the construction and installation of ATS systems, and the replacement of septic tanks that are currently contaminating our water table, especially in a situation where an entire community is at risk. We can't possibly clean up our water supply until the root of the problem is addressed. And that is the fact that the septic tanks at Kimbark Elementary School are bleeding raw sewage into our drinking water, and they need to be replaced with a new effective system for processing the sewage effluent from the elementary school. This was my first statement. Someone read it for me. But in the meantime, you guys have sent somebody out to take a look. I previously wrote to you regarding the failure of the septic tanks at Kimbark Elementary School and the availability of advanced treatment systems as an effective alternative. Thank you for acknowledging this contamination problem and sending someone out to survey the issue. I asked our Dvor Water Board President for an update and received no response. This is crucial information, and the shareholders have a right and a need to know what is being done. On September 9th, there was a school district truck at Kimbark and a man with a surveyor's wheel taking measurements. And today, there is a pro-craft septic truck and workers at the school in the same septic location. Could you let us know what you found and any information on a plan for resolution? Any information would be appreciated because our water company gives us nothing. And they're supposed to. They're supposed to be on our side. But apparently, you guys are acknowledging it. And could you give us any information on what's going on there?
Just for clarity on the process, we do accept public comments. We are not allowed to respond here in this format. So we will receive your public comments and any information will follow up.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Mike Thompson.
Hello. Okay, yeah, if you guys remember me from last time, I'm gonna give a lot of data again, results. I thoroughly, last two weeks, I went through a bunch more data, and I found something very interesting that occurred sometime around 2011. If you recall, last time, I brought up the low-flow devices. That's still a factor that I would like to know about, and which I hopefully to get that through the PIRs. But what I had found is that you guys could find this because you guys, the school district pays the water bill. Sometime between the, and this is a wide gap because this is just, I just learned this last night. Between 2012 and 2018, the Kimbark Elementary had a large water leak. I know this from talking to a former board member here within the last year and a half or so. He was an engineer. I worked for Dvor Water Company back in 96, 9 to 99. And so he was involved back then, so I kind of know the guy. I moved from Dvor. I was, I worked for Metropolitan Water District. I'm the chief system operator there. It's the largest water company based on population in the nation. But my roots started there at Dvor, and that's where I'd met Bob. And he had mentioned to me that, about the leak. And so when I'm looking at the data, what I found is on my 92-page document, I mentioned something about groundwater recharge, not groundwater recharge, but seawater barriers. With that water leak that occurred, it was so massive, and Bob told me this, you guys have to look at the records, what your bill was. I don't have the records. What it was doing, it was diluting the nitrate samples. That fresh water was diluting the nitrate samples for that aquifer, and it did it for quite a long period. I don't know how long the leak is. I'll get that information. I just didn't have time today. I did text a contractor, but he did not get back to me before this meeting. I happen to know the guy. But that's something worth noting. You know, whatever has transpired there, you know, I mentioned last time, prior to 1993, the average was about 4.5, okay? From 93, what I've learned since the last time I was here, from 93 up to about 2011, it did go up from the septic system being, and leach lines being installed. But whatever occurred in 2000, right after 2011, 12, and it could have been multiple things that occurred. That's when the numbers went out of whack from that point forward. And the, in 2000, I was mentioning this last time, but I never got to the data. It was kind of, I'm not really prepared for this. I'm just looking at numbers. I've been busy. But looking at, I was, there was a leak reported in 2024 on the septic system. Okay, that doesn't mean that's when the leak happened. It was around June. But if you look at the water quality data based on the nitrates, those, the numbers went up significantly. Whether it was a leak, it didn't get cleaned, whatever it was, there was an issue there at the septic system, and the nitrate numbers went up. Since 2024 to present, the concerning thing is that it's at 9.8 on average between the two wells. 9.8 parts per million. 2A's been running at 10.1, and well 3's have been at 9.5. Now, from 2025, the year-to-date average between the two is 10.2. As of right now, the, with well 3 running, it has not hit the 10 yet. But just because the number doesn't show 10 at the time of the sample, that's at the time of the sample. That's called a representative sample. It's at that time, at that moment. And nitrates have intensity, as with age of water, it actually increases within the distribution system. So but from, okay, I wanted to point this out. A year around, before and after COVID, okay, the average of the wells was 7.3, but the samples above 10 were, there's 10 or above, there were 17 of them out of 158 samples. Okay, that's 11%. During COVID, the average between the two wells is 6.4. Zero samples at 10 above out of 137 samples, that's 0%, right? COVID to present day, we're running 8.3 average. There's 77 samples that are above 10 out of 393 for that group there. That's 20% of the results. From 2023 to now, it's 30%. The average is at 9.2. We've had 77 above 10. That probably still reflects. I'm out.
Time.
I covered enough.
Thank you so much for your comment. Up next, we have Gabrielle Velasco.
Good evening, President and trustees, and to those who came here to support me. My name is Gabe Velasco. I am a warehouse worker in San Bernardino, and I'm also here as a volunteer through Inland Empire Immigrant Youth Collective, I.E. IYC. I.E. IYC is an undocumented youth-led group founded in 2010 that supports immigrant and mixed-status students across Riverside and San Bernardino counties through organizing, leadership development, campus resources, and legal support. I come here because immigrant families in this district are scared of enforcement very near where our children learn. Just last month, in San Bernardino, federal agents fired shots at a family's car on the way to work, breaking windows with kids inside and without a warrant. We've also seen ICE or Customs Border Patrol presence near churches and workplaces. These incidents show that racial profiling and aggressive enforcement are happening nearby, sometimes without transparency or accountability. Also, just days ago, SCOTUS issued a ruling that clears the way for racial profiling during immigration raids and sweeps. As a warehouse worker, I hear the same fears from my coworkers. Their children attend CBCUSD schools, and they worry whether schools are truly safe when enforcement can happen at job sites, at home, or near school at drop-off. They are also in fear of being racially profiled in our community spaces. The psychological harm is real. Mental health research from UC Riverside shows that enforcement operations, even indirectly, are hurting kids' ability to learn, attend school regularly, and focus because of anxiety and fear of separation. I have seen this clearly among the children of people in ICE detention whom my organization has worked closely with, such as a Filipino mother named Legaya who was detained in Adelanto ICE Processing Center. So we know California already requires protections under law AB 699 and the Attorney General Model's policies. CBCUSD reaffirmed its commitments to safe schools earlier in January this year, and tonight, we ask you to strengthen implementation on these demands. One, adopt and publish an AB 699-aligned policy that requires judicial warrants and clear agent identification before any law enforcement or ICE/CVP access or contact near schools or student records, explicitly prohibiting racial profiling or data sharing with immigration enforcement. Two, establish a rapid notification system so families are informed immediately, so via through text, phone, or email, if enforcement is reported near schools or in the community with translations in Spanish Tagalog and in other languages spoken by families. Also require that any contact or request by ICE or CBP be documented, so who, when, where, and whether a warrant has been shown, and included in a regular public report. Three, provide annual staff training for all district staff, campus security, and administrators on immigrant student rights, racial bias, and profiling, student privacy, including FERPO, which is Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, and responses to enforcement. And ensure trauma-informed mental health supports are available for students and families who experience or are affected by nearby enforcement. And lastly, four, designate Dream Resource Liaisons in every secondary school, and partner with our organization, I.E. IYC, and other community organizations for know-year rights training and resources for students and families. For many Filipinos like myself, who are part of the largest Asian community in the Inland Empire, these protections are urgent. Many Kababayan are in mixed-status families and work in low-wage jobs like warehouses where enforcement sweeps and profiling are especially likely to hit. These steps will keep kids in class, protect families, and reflect the values of San Bernardino. We know you are committed to these values, and we are asking you to ensure clear implementation at every school in the district. Salamat po, and thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Up next, we have Angela Albay.
Good evening, President and trustees. Thank you so much for hearing our comments. My name is Angela Albayani, and I am currently a student in the Teaching Credential Program at Cal State San Bernardino, preparing to become a teacher here in this district. I hope to spend my career serving the young people of San Bernardino. As a future educator, my concern is how both students and teachers are supported in moments of crisis, especially with the increase in immigration raids, community sweeps, and the fear that comes with them. As the previous speaker mentioned, just last month in San Bernardino, federal agents opened fire on a family's car on the way to work. We know that, from research at UC Riverside, that even when students are not directly targeted, the fear of immigration enforcement creates anxiety, disrupts attendance, and damages mental health. When students carry this trauma into the classroom, teachers need tools and resources to help them feel safe, to process their emotions, and to keep learning. But too often, educators are asked to handle these situations without adequate training or district guidance. If our schools are to remain safe and welcoming, then teachers need clear protocols, professional development, and access to counselors or trauma-informed supports. So tonight, I ask you to provide teacher training on how to respond when students are impacted by ICE enforcement or community raids. Expand mental health services so students can access counselors quickly after traumatic events. Create resource guides and clear protocols for teachers so we know what to do if students disclose fears or if immigration enforcement appears near a school. As someone preparing to join this profession, I want to make sure I enter classrooms that are truly safe spaces, not just for learning content, but for protecting our most vulnerable students. By giving both students and teachers the resources they need, we can ensure that San Bernardino classrooms remain places of trust, resilience, and hope. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Up next. I'm gonna struggle. Yahya Hafiz. If you can share with me, how do you say your name?
Yeah, no worries. Good evening, President and trustees. My name is Yahya Hafiz. You all are welcome. I call me Yahya. And I am an Arab-American community member here in the Inland Empire. I'm speaking tonight about Assembly Bill 715, which would restrict teachers from telling the truth about Palestine, Arab-American history, and other communities' lived experiences. The bill weaponizes vague language that opens up opportunities for silencing open discussions on these topics as categorically being labeled as anti-Semitic. And as the Council of UC Faculty Associations warns, it also opens up legal avenues that could be used for politically motivated attacks to silence educators who speak on these matters. As an Arab-American, I know how important it is for students to see their cultures and histories reflected honestly in the classroom. Yet, AB 715 threatens to punish teachers simply for teaching these realities. It sends a message to Arab, Muslim, and immigrant youth that their stories are not valued and that their history is something to be erased. This concern is not mine alone. The California Teachers Association, the California Faculty Association, and the ACLU all oppose AB 715 because it threatens academic freedom and risks silencing educators. When major education and civil rights organizations raise alarms, we need to pay attention. This is especially dangerous at a time when immigrant families in San Bernardino are already traumatized by ICE raids and profiling, like the last few speakers mentioned. Our students walk into classrooms carrying fear and anxiety, and they need educators who can affirm their identities and tell the truth, not teachers who are afraid they'll be punished for it. So tonight, I urge this board to: One, publicly oppose AB 715 and any attempt to punish educators for teaching about Palestine, Arab-Americans, or other marginalized communities. Urge the California governor to veto this legislation, as it is currently awaiting his signature. Two, protect academic freedom in San Bernardino classrooms so teachers can provide accurate, culturally-relevant education. Three, support Arab, Muslim, and immigrant students by affirming their right to see their experiences reflected in curriculum, not erased. Our students deserve schools where they can learn without fear, whether that fear comes from immigration enforcement or from laws that try to silence their history. As educators, we have a duty to prepare young people for critical thinking, empathy, and global citizenship. We cannot do that if we are censored. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Up next, we have Ms. Christina Marquez.
Good evening, board members, student board members, cabinet, Madam President, Superintendent Ariano. My name is Christina M. Marquez, and first I'll start by saying Happy Mexican Independence Day. This past weekend was the annual San Bernardino Teachers Association Fall Leadership Conference. It's the one time of year that site reps from all over our district can meet and greet old friends, make new ones, and converse over the weekend. We share ideas, strategies, funny stories, and memories from our many years in the district. Some of the attendees were new site reps who were there to learn not just from sessions presented, but from us old guard as well. Our weekend was packed with information, and we learned a lot. Some of our breakout sessions included new rep training, member benefits, practical classroom strategies. We learned about foster youth, CalSTRS, and retirement. And the big question is, is there going to be a golden handshake this year? And most importantly, the California Standards for the Teaching Profession 2024, which will be coming to all of us very soon. But last but not least, there was a session on evaluations, which we all get to experience at one time or another. But it was during this session that some of the discussion was, whatever happened to the administrator evaluations that staff had done in the past? Last year, I brought this up to several board members at the beginning of the year, or the ending of the year, hoping that this could be revisited. It is also hoping that it would be an anonymous survey that would not impact the staff in any way, shape, or form. Please take this into consideration. Thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments. 4.0, public hearing. 4.1, public hearing and adoption of sufficiency of TK 12 textbooks. I believe I will be... I believe I will be opening the public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay. I will close the hearing at this time. And can I get a motion? Moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Medina, second by Mr. Tillman. Vote, please. Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. 5.0, closed session. 5.1, closed session, public comments. Do we have any?
Do not.
All right, we will now adjourn to a closed session. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Coming back from closed session, 6.0, action report from closed session, 6.1, expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings, facts, and recommendations, and orders the expulsion of the following students with the identification number as listed below in accordance with Board Rules and Regulations and in compliance with Ed Code Section 48900.
Moved.
Second. Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. 6.2, students recommended for suspension or expulsion excluding mandatory offenses but remanded to youth court for other means of correction. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of facts of positive youth development and orders the suspension or expulsion of the following students with the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with Board Rules and Regulations and in compliance with Ed Code Section 48900. Moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Mr. Tillman. Vote, please. Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Santos? Motion carries. 6.3, lift readmit of expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following student with the identification number as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with Board Rules and Regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Motion, please.
Move.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Santos. Vote, please. Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. 6.4, other closed session action. There is no additional closed session action. 7.0, student board members. 7.1, reports and comments. I will go ahead and ask Mrs. or Ms. Hernandez Garcia. Sorry, that's how I have you listed on my form.
Good afternoon. My name is Brisa Hernandez Garcia, and I am a senior at middle, college, high school. So first off, I'd like to start by thanking not only the board, but specifically Dr. Rodriguez and Ms. Ann Pearson. Because last month, middle college had its senior trip, which was not only a valuable experience for me personally, but on behalf of my entire senior class. I know that getting to visit schools like Berkeley, UC Davis, and Stanford were all experiences. I don't think any of us would have ever expected to have if not for the contributions of the board. Like I said, Dr. Rodriguez and Ms. Pearson. I know I told my principal after the trip that it felt like everyone had found their Stanford. And what I meant by this is that it honestly did feel like everyone got to see a school that resonated with their goals and their dreams, and that was a really great part of that. And so just to highlight some things that have happened at middle college, we had Club Rush last week. And this Saturday, their speech and debate team had its second, which is in its second year of operation, had its first tournament of the season. For San Bernardino High School, this week is their College and Career Ready Spirit Week, and this Saturday is their Mr. and Mrs. Cardinal Pageant. At Sierra High School, their Olive Branch Resource Center has partners with local and commercial sponsors to give back to the community. And the Olive Branch is also a class that teaches the students networking skills and how to conduct themselves in a business setting. So we actually had our first Slack meeting yesterday, and our special guest was Superintendent Ariano. And Dr. Rodriguez was also in attendance. The superintendent gave a very moving speech about his background and how he became a superintendent. And there were also activities where we, as student board members, got to be in groups with students, not only from the high school level, but also the middle schools. And we not only got to take on roles of leadership, but we also got to introduce ourselves to everyone in Slack. And I would just like to conclude. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that wonderful report. Mr. Delgado?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for attending today's board meeting. I know it's hot outside. I was writing this like in the morning, so think of it, it still is in the morning. But this building will help us cool off. I want to recognize that earlier this month, the community created an event named Recovery Happens. I'd volunteered at this event, so I was privileged with bringing the spirit within the event to all the people around. I was dancing around and giving people pom-poms, shout chants that'll make people proud of their recovery from what they come from within substance abuse. A serious note, though, I'm glad people are coming together despite such a rough background. To heal, we must embrace the times which are dark. In the days, we must shine with pride of who we are. Within my school, first off, our football is going to play Heritage on Friday, and they're looking forward to expanding their winning streak of five games in a row, so super happy about that. And I would personally like to invite everyone here today. That Pacific High School's hosted chapter is hosting a community event named Parents' Team Night. During this event, we will provide workshops in order to teach the importance of design, art, and engineering. Anyone can come, as well as even parents or students who wish to go to Pacific later on in the future to bring a sense of community within families and students on campus. Pirate's Locker is a club within our school that collects clothes from around everyone else within the campus. Their motto is "Providing Gently Used Clothes to Those in Need." Its description reads, "Pirate's Locker is a club in Pacific High School which takes in donations from the people within, but not limited to, the San Bernardino community." These donations are then sorted to those that are acceptable, such as you can't turn in clothes with holes in them. Those ones are kept. After the sorting process, the clothes are then distributed to those people in need of San Bernardino County. They had their meeting today, so it was good to see them organize. Other school highlights. Indian Springs High School held the very first Hari Bho event on Friday, the 12th, which represented Hispanic culture and honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, starting September 15th, which showed the diversity within their campus. Another meaningful event, which also took place, was the mental health awareness activity during lunch on Thursday, the 11th, which honored Suicide Prevention Month, run by the Climate and Culture Club. Indian Springs was also able to bring back their AP African-American Studies as a history class rather than elective, which expends the opportunities given to students. For Cohon High School, they had their first rally in Hoco Carnival, where they connected with the community and showcased clubs and school spirit. Cohon also had their psychology pathway evaluated for the highest certification-linked gold learning certification, which demonstrates that a school pathway provides the highest quality in college and career readiness. Lastly, Cohon had their grand reopening of the New Wellness Center, where they showcased the trained community of health workers. They also had dogs there for everyone, so you can go pet them, and they were super nice and cute. It really brought in a sense of comfort, and I think that's amazing. This Monday, I finally got to personally meet all the new and returning Slack members to thank them personally for voting me for student board member. When I ran, it was super scary because these people don't even vote for me, but I'm glad that everyone did. It's an honor to be sitting in this seat today. One key lesson that I took from Slack that Monday is to build community circles, even if it's something small, within the people near you. I love getting to know why people feel inspired to do what they do, or even something simple as of what food they liked and why. So maybe one day, I can get something for them out of hospitality. And we had an amazing speaker, Ariana. I like, oh my God, I got teary-eyed. It was super inspirational, so thank you for inspiring other people within Slack. And once again, thank you for all those who attended today. Even the people who left, I still appreciate the attendance and the people tuning in. I appreciate those people, too. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you for that amazing report once again. And then um Mr. Jones.
Good afternoon, board and cabinet, I would like to express my gratitude to Superintendent Ariano and Dr. Rodriguez for showing up to our Slack meeting the other day. They did not have to show up, but they did and they came out of their own time. Personally, I would also like to express my gratitude for Superintendent, Superintendent Ariano for taking the time out to meet a kid that I actually asked him to meet, but he also met the kid before I told him to, because there's a kid there who I noticed who was very involved and wanted to do what we do as student board members and Superintendent Ariano was actually able to take the time out of his out of his time there to sit with the student and speak with that student, so I highly favor him for doing that. Also, today I would like to thank board member Dr. Wyatt for fixing the pen on my suit. He told me, go look in the mirror, you'll notice a difference, and when I did check on my phone, I noticed a complete difference, at first I didn't even recognize it. And now I notice it's a complete difference and it looks so much better, so I would, I would, I highly thank him for that. This, uh I might stutter, so give me uh my fault, uh. This month, Ava Bogardin went to the NFL Rams game and was recognized by the team and was able to go on the field as she won the NFL Latino Youth Honors and has a GPA of four point nine, as well as she is third in the nation for flag, for girls' flag football and also is top five in the nation for most points scored. So that was something that was wonderful. Another thing is a Royal High, a Royal Valley High School held a media day for fall sports and the school hosted a district college night on September eighteenth and it might and it was a good opportunity for students to meet colleges, as well as our district provides do enrollment classes, so most students were already most students were already able to take enrollment classes and know a little bit about it. Another thing I would like to talk about is San Andreas High School, how they have a diploma program and that works with students one on one to help them apply for college. Another thing is that they have a business program. They have a business pathway that is helping pour into students and that is helping pour into students, that is help that helps pour into students in the community by allowing them to get certain business certifications. I would like to report on Slack as we, as both other board members, both other student board members stated that we were able to go in groups and meet, meet other people younger and our grade and we're actually able to, uh we're actually able to introduce ourselves to other people and we're able to take the time out to spend time in a circle with other people that we did not know and some people that we did know. And we're actually able to talk with them for about ten to fifteen minutes and we're able to learn about a lot of new people. And there's a student there who actually thanked me for making him feel welcome, because he wasn't sure if he was able to feel welcome and speak. And he, he shared a little bit about his story, so I, I also want to thank that student for doing that and allowing for me, allowing for him to feel com and for thanking me for allowing him to feel comfortable. Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you, oh my goodness, all wonderful, wonderful reports. Thank you, thank you for reporting and joining us um on those amazing reports. So I'm gonna go ahead and move on to eight point O administrative reports and presentations and we have eight point one bond update presentation. As requested at the August nineteenth, twenty twenty five board meeting, Associate Superintendent Mr. Terry Koenig and Facilities Planning and Development Director Mr. Thomas Pace will provide additional information on the purpose and process of a school bond, including a potential needs assessment. So I will go ahead and turn it over now to Mr. Koenig.
Thank you, President Savios and Vice President Grande, Superintendent Ariano, as well as the Board of Trustees, Cabinet Members and our community, thank you for this opportunity to follow up at the request of the board, as you mentioned, Principal, excuse me, President Savios. I would like to uh turn your attention to the next slide. And just go over a brief overview of what we're gonna share with the board this evening. Uh first, we're gonna take a look at the state facility program that will allow us to potentially leverage uh state and local funding. Review the SBCUSD needs that include growth considerations on the north end of town, as well as education and infrastructure. And then uh we have a summary that uh will follow up with uh any uh questions, next steps or directions or additional information that the board might request, so that we can provide that uh to you at the uh next board meeting. I will now turn it over to Mr. Tom Pace, our Director of Facilities.
Good evening, everyone, a couple housekeeping items first. Uh at the last meeting, uh the board had requested our comprehensive needs assessment, uh the facilities master plan and cost by site, which we provided in the board packet. Uh we do have hard copies that if, in case you want a hard copy, we can get you one later. Uh the other item of note is all pictures in the presentation come from our schools within our school district, so just want to point that out, these aren't schools outside the school district, every photo represents a school within our school district. Uh last month, I walked through what a school bond is, uh how it's repaid, and tonight we're gonna connect that foundation to the specific physical needs on our campuses, from definition to application. In November of twenty twenty four, uh California voters approved proposition two, a ten billion dollar state school facilities bond with fifty eight point seven percent approval. It was placed on the ballot by Assembly Member Meritucci to refill the state facility program after years of underfunding and following the failed school bond of twenty twenty. Prop two dedicates eight point five billion to K twelve, four billion for modernization, three billion for new construction, plus six hundred million each for CTE and charter schools and one point five billion to community colleges. The intent is straightforward. Repair, modernize, build safe, equitable learning spaces while strengthening the state local match system. With Prop two in place, we have uh identified funding uh opportunities and we're gonna go over their requirements. Uh Prop two organizes dollars into clear funding categories with defined match rates and eligibility requirements, key pieces. State share of up to fifty five percent for new construction, meaning if we do a new building at a million dollars, the state would contribute five hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards that effort. Uh for modernization, it goes up to sixty five percent, so in that same example, the state would contribute six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a one billion dollar modernization. There are other supplemental add on grants for things like TK, career technical education, energy and climate efficiency and minimum essential facilities, meaning that if you built a school forty to fifty years ago without a library or other deemed essential facilities, the state would help pay for those. Uh it allows for small school district assistance, uh planning and accountability uh and a requirement for a five year master plan. Uh with these funding categories and requirements in place, we're going to look at what resources a local bond could unlock for us within the state program. In totality, we can, uh with a local match, we could unlock three hundred and sixty four million dollars in modernization eligibility, meaning right now over the next six years, our schools will be eligible for three hundred and sixty four million dollars of modernization funding from the state across sixty eight campuses. We will review those campuses here in a minute. But we're gonna talk about need first, uh and we generally look at need in three categories. Uh we look at growth, where we have residential growth within the city, so if we have a capacity issue at our schools, we look at growth as one type of need. So we're gonna start with the first bucket and we're gonna talk about residential growth. Within the city, we have residential growth occurring up against the mountains. Uh primarily, as you can see in this photo, along the North Vertamont Palm North Park corridor. Uh we have, we identified there for you seven or eight campuses, all of which are at capacity and that is before the future residential growth occurs within this area. Uh the diagram shows you where the future residential growth will occur on the north end and where it is occurring. Uh I'll highlight one, the area above Cal State San Bernardino, uh directly behind North Park. Uh there are five hundred homes planned uh to be built behind Cal State San Bernardino as an example. Uh there are other developments within the city that are planned, we just showed you a snapshot. Uh you may be wondering how North Vertamont can be a hundred and three percent full. Uh I will tell you how that's accomplished. Uh we have an AM PM class, so when we look at capacity, we look at classrooms. One classroom can yield twenty four students, but if we split and have an AM and a PM class, you get more students out of it. So our utilization at North Vertamont is currently at a hundred and three percent. Uh when you look at high schools, you'll notice that a Royal Valley and Cohn are listed in the eighty five, eighty six percent range. Uh that is by design, uh when we look at secondaries, given the fact that our students change classes, utilization can never be at a hundred percent, we have planning periods. Uh we only teach six out of the seven periods, so there are always uh empty classrooms. So effectively, a Royal Valley and Cohn are at a hundred percent capacity already without any future growth. So within the state facility program, we have new construction eligibility, every year uh we give the state our statistics for growth and they will tell us what eligibility we have. Yes, sir.
On the, on the, the page with the sites and utilization, I see Palm is at eighty five percent. Is there, is there a reason why we don't shift some of the students from North Vertamont to Palm?
Uh we need to look at boundaries, uh but essentially we view both of those schools. Even though one's at a hundred and three and one's at eighty five, there's not a lot of room. We would have to look at how the boundaries would affect that utilization, so it's not as easy as as we look at neighborhoods, the composition of those students becomes important and it may not all equally transfer over to where it balances out, if that makes sense.
I just know they're real close together.
They're really close.
I live right there, so it was just for seeing that there might be a way to move the boundaries.
Or, and we are evaluating boundaries on the north end.
Thank you.
In all cases. I apologize, I'm learning how to use the clicker. Under the state program, uh we have eligibility for new construction to the tune of about twenty one million dollars. Now I want to point out that when we say a Royal Valley and Cohn, we're not talking about the two high schools, we're talking about the attendance boundaries. So all schools within those two attendance boundaries have eligibility. Uh a Royal Valley attendance boundaries of twelve and Cohn at eight for a total of twenty one million dollars. So if the district had twenty one million dollars of matching funds, we could unlock twenty one million dollars in state funding to uh tackle the growth on the north end. Just to put it into perspective, over the next ten to fifteen years, we anticipate four thousand additional homes being built within the city. Uh beyond growth, uh oh, and there is a point to mention, uh I'm gonna go back two slides, I apologize, we collect developer fees. It is a one time fee uh that is charged to the developer of the new homes to help offset the effects of new construction within the city. Uh we currently charge a capped rate, the state defines the rate at five dollars a square foot. So if you were to build a new home at two thousand square feet, one of the fees that you would have to pay is to the school district uh to help offset the growth that people feel comes from uh new construction. The reason I mention that five dollars is the actual cost of construction for us per square foot is over twenty dollars. So we have to make up the difference, so if you build ten homes, we collect the fee, we are short by over eighty percent of the total value of construction. Uh we also have educational need. Uh beyond just growth, we know that we have several areas of uh what could be, and so I want to walk you through potentially what those look like. Uh our goal is equitable facilities across every neighborhood. Uh this slide identifies where we will lift district wide uh baselines for instruction and where we have room for growth. So every student learns in spaces that match our instructional vision. As an example, special education environments, about sixty percent of our classrooms are not fully aligned with current specifications. Opportunities include modernizing for accessibility, sensory support and storage. Early learning, a hundred and fifty of our hundred and ninety classrooms predate current TKK design. Uh opportunity is to add in restrooms, age appropriate outdoor spaces and safe drop offs. Libraries, fifty percent of our libraries operate in relocatables, opportunity upgrade to tech rich, tech rich flexible hubs. Uh replace the oldest portables, we have eight hundred and ninety two of our two thousand twenty one classrooms are portables. Seven hundred of those are twenty five years or older. So with opportunities mapped, some important projects uh don't qualify for a state match, but still need critical need and we're gonna go over those next. So beyond what's available in the state program, we have other need, and so we gave you a couple of the things that are beyond the state facility program. I'm gonna use the Sturgis Center as an example, does not qualify for state funding, but we know is a need and a widely used building within our community. Uh our adult center does not qualify for uh state funding, meaning all monies that are needed for those projects would have to come from local sources. Uh we are not saying that these are an absolute, we are identifying where if there are priorities within our community, within the board, within cabinet, within our community members that exist. Uh we took uh what our knowledge of those facilities are and put some dollars to them. Parking lots you'll see up there, as an example, Mount Vernon doesn't have a parking lot, Mount Vernon Elementary School, parents utilize the street. We don't even have a drop off area, they utilize the park next door, so when we talk about parking lots, it's things like that, it's not repaving, it's not, it's expanding a lot of our parking lots to accommodate the additional resources that we've given to the schools. Uh athletics, uh that is the idea of middle school gymnasiums at the uh middle schools that we haven't identified yet. So just a few examples. So the two buckets that we've talked about so far are residential growth, educational need, and the third bucket of need is infrastructure. I just want to highlight one quick one here, we have fourteen sites that have costs that exceed fifty percent of the replacement value of that school. Uh I like to explain this, that if you have bought a car that is worth twenty thousand dollars and you take it to the uh shop and they tell you that you have ten thousand dollars of repair, once you get to that fifty percent mark, you start to think about, is the car worth keeping, do I put that much money into it, where is my money best served? Uh we are not saying that those schools need replacement, simply saying that there is a lot of investment, at le, at least forty of our campuses that are coming. Modernization eligibility, we just wanted to list the sites so that you can see them. Like I said, there's over sixty of them that are eligible for modernization. Uh we kinda, so it's easily digestible, we're giving you three categories, we're giving you the largest schools first with eligibility, then middle and then the smaller uh modernization eligibility that's out there. Uh as you can see, our high schools generate a lot of uh eligibility. Uh schools receive eligibility on a twenty five year basis. So you can modernize a school every twenty five years in the state building program.
May I stop you right there for a question?
Uh just one quick question, so I don't forget later, but I just, I'm curious to know, what are those fourteen sites that have costs that exceed fifty percent of their identified?
They don't have that on hand, but I will get that to you. We'll get that in the next Friday update.
Thank you.
The largest, San Gregorio uh has forty three million dollars of state eligibility. Uh what you'll see there when we list the twenty, or the, I'm sorry, forty three total, the state would provide twenty five. So you'll see what the state would uh potentially pay us for that modernization all the way down. Oh, uh I do have to point out, I just love this photo, this is the new bleachers at a Royal Valley uh gymnasium. Uh they used to be old wooden bleachers, we replaced them this summer, they're new fiberglass bleachers uh and coupled with the new floor, uh that is a really cool basketball gym. Nineteen schools have modernization uh eligibility in the seven to ten million dollar range and twenty three schools in smaller chunks, five to seven. and 23 schools in smaller chunks, 5 to 7. I like this slide because it takes all the need that we talked about and kind of groups it together. What you're looking at is the modernization category. So if you're looking at what the state potentially would pay for modernization, the next line down is the money that they would potentially pay for new construction, what were eligible for special ed modifications, what they would pay for transitional kindergarten, and facility hardship. And then you can see what local funding would be needed if we wanted to unlock the $434 million that is available to us for potentially total funding of close to $800 million of improvements across our campuses. I do want to quickly point out that in order to raise $330 million, the ask to the median homeowner is $130 per year, as we talked about at the last meeting. And we are hoping to keep it brief for you tonight. We know it's a long night, but we're here for questions, comments, questions.
As well as directions that the board might have for us.
Mr. Tillman?
You said $130 per year. Is that $130 per year per $100,000 in value? Is that 100?
That's based off of the assessed value, the median assessed value of $220,000. So that total tax bill to a homeowner of a home valued by the county at $220,000.
I got you. So if it's an $800,000 home, it'd be four times that.
Bingo.
I got you.
Yes, sir.
The district did, since I've been on the board, three bonds, right?
The last one we did was Measure N, which was 2012. Measure T, which was 2004.
How much was the latest one?
250.
And the one before that?
Was 125. And those are the two I know of since 2000.
And we did one before that, like, we did a Royal Valley. I think it was a small one, like $50 million or something like that.
That actually predates my knowledge. But yes, I believe that to be true, sir.
So have any of them been paid off?
So we sell bonds. So when you, so Measure N had several bond issuances. Each of those bond issuances have their own timelines.
Is N the latest one?
N is the latest one.
And what was the one before N?
T. So yes, there are things that have been paid off in T. I can get, we can add in the Friday update the repayment schedule for each one of those bond issuances for the total bond itself.
And we don't know about the bond before that, if it's been paid off?
That has been paid off.
So the first has been paid off, the smaller one. And then T, we don't know how much we still owe on that one.
I do not.
And we don't know how much we still owe on N?
And yeah, each one has a different schedule. So I have a rough idea of each one, but I don't want to mislead you on what's been paid off and what hasn't. So I'd like to get the full table, and I can lay that out for you.
And I think it'd be good for us to know that. Because, you know, every time we do a bond, we do it from the perspective like this is the only bond. And, you know, give us the money, we're going to pay it off. It's almost like you keep buying a new car, but you never pay the car off. And, you know, I'm all for weighing the needs versus when we pull the trigger on a bond. And that's what I'm looking for, what the true need is and what's the most, our top priorities. But I don't lose sight of the fact that right now, there are a lot of costs out there in terms of housing on residents and more costs coming in terms of this big thing with the insurance. The insurance is projected to increase substantially within the next, I don't know when, but real soon because of companies pulling out and new laws, so.
California insurance law has definitely adversely affected homeowners and renters alike in California.
Exactly. So at this point, there's a lot of fear out there about the increased costs associated with that. I just don't want us to lose sight of that. Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Medina?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I know I have always been against looking at bonds that can increase, you know, the amount of taxes that a resident would be paying. And you, I know in the last presentation, you also mentioned the amount of taxes that companies will be paying. That will, like, for instance, those warehouses and so forth. So they also bring in a large amount of the funding that would help support some of these projects. I do see that this is an opportunity when it comes to getting our money's worth, when it comes to those opportunities of getting matched funds through the state. I do agree, I would like to see more information when it comes to the Measure T and Measure N, how much we owe on those ones, and what's the plan of how to cover those. But I also would like to move forward and maybe get consensus, at least to get what, maybe do a survey. I know I've been against the surveys as well. But I, in the past, have heard that we would use an agency that will be unbiased and really get the true picture of how the residents are feeling about this, if we were to move forward with this as well. So that's something that I would like to see if we can try to move forward, is looking at a survey, but then also getting more information on how would we cover or how would we pay off the Measure T and Measure N.
Ms. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, gentlemen, for a great presentation. I'd absolutely agree with my colleague, Ms. Rosales Medina, in regards to surveying the community again. And I know we did it in the past, and I believe we had a pretty high approval rating last time, in the 70-something percent top, if I'm correct. I know there were some concerns with some of my colleagues on the board that that was, you know, across the entire community and that it representative of everyone. I know we'll address that this time. I'm also wondering, and I'd like to get this information, on how many districts in our county went out for a bond last election and actually had them approved? I'm pretty sure it was almost all of them, if not all of them. You may know that already off the top of your head.
I know that statewide, I think there's only two or three failed bonds statewide.
So there's been a very high success rate of those being passed, especially in our county. And, you know, the one thing, and trust me, I don't, I was just talking to my colleague over here because I'm doing some remodeling to my house. I said if I get it reassessed, I'll be paying more taxes. But, you know, I've always felt okay about paying more taxes when it comes to improvements of our schools. And, you know, I know we take great pride, this board takes great pride in how our facilities look. And I'll be honest, so is Mr. Ariano. I've noticed a huge difference since you've come on board, even in just the simple makeovers, facelifts, about what our folks are doing. And people notice that. They notice when they drive around, when they look at our schools. And, you know, I'm even more excited to hear that, you know, we have, well, yes and no, 5,000 more units being built in our city, which hopefully, you know, they're affordable housing because we need younger families in our cities. So we have students that are younger that continue through our education system. So, you know, they're here for a while. But that's in addition of quite a few new homes. Do we know if any of those are high-density homes? High-density housing by chance?
Majority of the homes appear to be built on the north end or suburban sprawl. It seems like the majority of them are.
The only reason why I ask is because I know at least, and I'm not big on high-density housing. I think we have enough here already. But we do need affordable housing for folks that are coming in. And also, keep in mind, I know some of us have been reached out to by a local gentleman investor in our city who is looking at affordable housing for our own employees here in our city. And I know there's a bill that's going through right now that I would ask us to look at as well, maybe try to incorporate that into our planning for our city, planning for our staff and our community. That may be a big ask, and it might not belong to you guys, but something to think about and incorporate into planning. Because, you know, I look forward to meeting with this gentleman. I think we've been, I've been asked you guys when we meet if you could be there because I want that to be a very open and robust conversation where you could ask the technical questions from them. Because if we can keep our staff here and our employees here who can't afford maybe one of these 700, 800, $900,000 homes, and then the north end, 1.4 and 1.5 million dollar homes, we have those in San Bernardino, if you didn't know that now. We need affordable housing too for our staff. So, thank you.
Ms. Avalos Grande?
Yes, I just have to mention it. You showed the picture again, and the tree looks dead on the top and still green on the bottom. That looks like an accident waiting to happen around children. So I want you to look into perhaps removing it and planting some other trees in the future. What do you think?
We had an independent arborist review the tree. They've given us recommendations to cut the top few feet off the tree, but feels that it has 15 to 20 years of life ahead of it. So we are planning on cutting the top of the tree off.
Thank you. Mr. Santos?
Thank you for your presentation. I think, you know, I think this is important as a parent who's had students at Cajon High School, for example, and will have, I love saying this, I will have at least one student at Cajon High School till 2035. I have a lot of kids. So an issue like the bathrooms, because I know my boys complained about the bathrooms. I know fellow students, it just doesn't have enough bathrooms, right? Something is simple, but I know we've gotten that complaint. So things like that are important. I have one at North Vertemont. North Vertemont needs a lot of things. I don't want to say, but it is. It's an older, an older school. So I think something like this is important. So thank you.
Ms. Alexander, do you, Mrs. Alexander, do you have any questions that you want to ask?
I do. It was just more of a clarification. The 500 projected houses that are expected to be developed, I think it's above Cal State, those students would actually go to probably North Park. Is that correct? Because I wasn't sure it would be percentages. And I mean, I appreciate the presentation, and it definitely supports what we're looking for. But I have to be conscientious of our constituents as well. But I was just curious to know, do those students go to North Park? Because it's above Cal State.
We believe that the boundary, the current boundary, yes. That would be North Park.
Right. And so what was the percentage for North Park again?
Give me one second. 93% capacity.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Medina?
So I would like to get consensus on at least moving forward with finding an agency that will provide us a survey, authentic survey that mirrors our community. I'd like to get consensus on that. And then again, the other portion was just to look at the Measure N and T. But right now, I'd like consensus on.
So give me a second for just everybody to comment. I have some questions and some comments, and I'll come back to that request. Mr. Tillman?
I would just like, if we're going to get a survey that did not be from a company associated with getting bonds passed, it has to be just a company that comes in and their only job and their only profession is doing surveys, not someone associated with doing a survey for a bond company. Because there's a person, a company that does a survey for a bond company is going to set the survey up to be positive. There's no way of getting around it. My concern is I want to see a survey that actually asks people about the concerns they have. When we talk about $130 per $200,000 homes, that's if, that's for the new bond. That's not on top of what people are paying already. So, but I want that information to be given, and I want a real assessment. We should say for the people who are on fixed income, here's what their response is. Because you're going to have a small segment of your population that is barely getting by. And some of them will actually end up losing their homes as the prices increase. But I want to see that in a survey. I don't want someone to give me a survey and just sugarcoat everything and avoids surveying the people that are most vulnerable. So some folks may have a landline. Some folks you might have to knock on the door. But just have somebody do one where they send out texts and emails or only go to people who, kids are in school, that's not a fair survey. I want a reputable company that's not associated with the bond process to do the survey. Thank you.
I think that's a reasonable ask, and I think that we have the ability of finding at least two or three people for the board to consider and choose from. I know one of the things we talked about our board subcommittee on is we really would like the board to see the questions ahead of time, help develop those questions, help select the person that is going to do the process so that there's transparency and trust in the process.
Thank you. So I'll just ask a couple of my questions that I have. I'll start with the infrastructure needing, need findings page and the modernization eligibility page. Is there overlap between how you're defining modernization with that infrastructure needs page? Is there overlap, or is that in addition?
Like I'm a novice with all of the technology. I apologize. Yes, there is overlap. So as a point, as you modernize spaces or as we replace buildings, that yes, some of this need goes away. This isn't in addition to. So we want to highlight that you have some need in growth. We have some need in basic infrastructure. When I say basic infrastructure, repairing roofs. There's an item on the agenda tonight for maintenance and operations for a sewer system at Roosevelt, if I am not mistaken, for emergency repairs that need to be made there. So we're just highlighting that we have nuts and bolts systems that need constant work or replacement. But a lot of that gets taken care of in the modernization program. So as we go through, Fairfax is one of the schools that is eligible. It needs, it's one of our older schools. So it needs parking lot additions. It needs new PA systems. It needs new water conveyance systems. So as we modernize, we take care of that. I'd say the best example of that, as you've driven past Pacific High School. Pacific High School had the highest level of work orders. Seven years ago, within the system, we were receiving over 800 work orders for repair at Pacific High School on a yearly basis. Is now at the lowest amount because of the amount of work that we've put into Pacific High School. We've updated the finishes, the systems. A lot of that gets accomplished through that process.
So at that school, would you say that that school was modernized?
It's a combination of several things. There were new buildings plus modernization. And the state ended up contributing over 55% of the value of those improvements because we participated in three or four of their programs.
Okay, okay, understood. And then the other, I don't know if it's question, well, there's a couple of questions embedded there. So, you know, as we kind of, and I'll get board consensus in a second. But as we move forward to, you know, survey the community, if that's where the board wants to go, I'll just give you my responses to what the survey would have been on a personal kind of note, right? So, you know, in addition to having folks that are on a fixed income that, you know, this would increase their payment, you're also dealing with the younger folks and younger generations like myself that are not homeowners, that are trying to, you know, become homeowners. And so you're looking at an average in San Bernardino, you know, house payment of about anywhere from $3,800 to $4,500 a month, right? And we're not talking about new developed homes. We're talking about all throughout, you know, San Bernardino City, which is really high, right? You're, you really have to have a really good paying job or two, two really good paying jobs. That's just for your mortgage. That's not including, you know, the taxes, you know, every year. That's not including, you know, these additional things. So I do want to ask a question in regards to the comment that you had made about the $5 on, per square foot, I think you said, where it costs us 20, and those $5 get paid from the developer. Is that fee that the developer pays what would essentially be going into what we know as Melrose Tax? Or is that separate?
That's slightly separate. So the developer fee is something that you pay when you go get your permit from the city. So when you take a plan set to the city to approve to either build a new home or add on to your home, So when you take a plan set to the city to approve to either build a new home or add on to your home, the city will tell you, you have to talk to the school district and pay a fee for the home you're building or for the building addition that you're adding. The theory is that for every home built, if you build a larger home of four or 5,000 square feet, the theory is that you're going to affect student enrollment at a greater rate because the house can hold more people. If you build smaller, that's why it's on a per square foot basis. We don't set that rate. That is a state requirement. Every year, the state allocation board sets the rate for developer fees to be collected in California.
So, so I guess the question that I'm really trying to ask is, I want to make sure that whatever fees are being charged to the developer, that then the developer doesn't then turn around and then pass that fee on to the buyers. Because Melrose tax to me sounds like that's what it is. And when you, you know, when I look up the definition, I'll give you a very simple example. There are homes in a gated community, because I've been looking in the last past year or two, right? For homes, there's a gated community right on where they, where they put, uh, over there by Chavez. So it's that street. Um, I think that's Palm. I get confused with Palm and Kendall. I think Kendall runs this way and Palm runs this way. But anyway, it's where your Tesla chargers are. There's a gated community right there on that street on the right side of homes. And I was looking at a home there and the Melrose tax on that home for the year, I kid you not, was I think like $12,000. So, so, you know, with, with, and I'm assuming that these homes that are going to be developed on the other side, you know, on the behind Cal State are going to be more or less because from what I understand newer homes come with this Melrose tax.
The case.
Okay. Okay, so I just want some clarity around that because that's really scary for, for young folks.
I, I feel the angst on that. I can, uh, maybe not answer the question directly, but hopefully give you enough insight that I can keep it concise. Uh, the developer in that gated community, I know paid the developer fees to us, based off of what is required to pay to get a permit. I think all costs of development get passed on to the homeowner, if that makes sense. If it costs the developer X amount to build, whatever costs are there, they divide up amongst the homes that they're selling. Uh, we don't have any direct control over what they choose to charge homeowners or not. I can tell you that we don't have a Melrose relationship with that developer or the one behind Cal State San Bernardino. Does that make sense?
Kind of, sort of. So how does that, um, how does that community have that tax? And.
I don't, but I don't think it's a, if there is a tax, it's not a school tax.
Okay, got it. Got it.
The only fee that I know of for the one community you're talking about, and I know that developer because they came in and paid that fee. They paid a one-time fee for the impacts related to the development that they were going to build. So it was a one-time fee.
I hear what you're saying. So again, you know, that's, you know, coming, you know, folks that are here may have, you know, their houses and they have bought them, maybe, you know, they've, they've been owners for years and years. And, you know, this, this is realistically a new concern. So for, for younger folks like myself that are looking to buy a home. So when we talk about, you know, adding, we're not just looking into, you know, folks that may be on a fixed income, but we're also looking at, you know, the affordability for younger folks in our communities. And so, um, I would really, you know, want us to think around that as well and, and, you know.
President, just for clarification, a Melrose tax is, that's decided by the developer. They're going to do it and they charge it for that community. But you'll see on your tax bill, there'll be a line item for a Melrose tax, which is still going to have our taxes on there, which would be separate.
Right, but it'll be in addition to.
Exactly.
Right, right, right. That's, and that's my point. Thank you, Ms. Medina?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate you bringing that forward because at the end of the day, I think that's where the reflection and that's where, um, the survey is going to be so important who it's done by. Because then we're getting those pockets of young, uh, potential young homeowners or, or individuals that are not homeowners and will probably express that as well. So that way we can get a full picture on how that, um, how they're feeling.
One of the notes I wrote down, uh, when Mr. Tillman, uh, made his comment and then when I heard you speak, if the board gives consensus for a survey, I think what's important is that we get a stratosphere, a good stratification of our community across age groups. It's not just call a thousand people and see who the first thousand people are that pick up. I think what I hear is that what's important is that all voices are heard through a survey and that we need to spend the time and take the effort to make sure all voices come through.
Yeah, because all of that aggregates, right? The taxes that we have to pay elsewhere and then the, the fact that the homes are so expensive and then your mortgage payment now is this plus that tax plus this. You know, every little chunk or every little bit of it eventually tends to add up. And, you know, by, by me expressing this, in no way am I not in support, obviously of, you know, renovation, modernization and you, all these things. But at the end of the day, we have to make sure that our families are also able to, you know, afford. Because then, you know, what do we have at the end of the day?
Mr. Santos?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I guess I kind of want to, I think part of it is also thinking in the long and the big picture of our community and improving what our schools look like so we don't lose students to other school districts that do invest in their schools and hopefully communicating to the community that this is for them. I understand, trust me, my taxes go up. I mean, they're going to go, that it, we have to re, uh, reallocate how we do our funds, how I do my monthly planning, right? How I pay my taxes. I do get that, but I also think we should communicate to the community of how important it is to renovate some of these schools, to improve some of these schools, everything that he just presented. So I do understand the, hey, I'm trying, I remember trying to buy a home and, you know, I luckily ended up in San Bernardino because I was trying to buy in L.A., but that wasn't going to happen. And I ended up somewhere where I love, I do. Um, but also the message of how important it is to improve our community based on how our schools look, how our students, um, when they go to those schools, that they're proud of their schools. And, and, and the reality is just like your home. If your home looks good, if your yard is clean, if your neighborhood is clean, you're going to be a little more proud of it, right? You, and, and we're a visual people, right? It could be the greatest school ever. We could have the greatest teachers, but if the building looks like it was built in 1800 something, people are going to be like, ugh, that's a rundown place. That school isn't any good, which I think is unfair. So I think there's another side to, to, to what you're saying and it's important for the community to invest in the community. But I, I, I also get that, hey, not everyone can afford it. So getting a survey of really understanding what our community wants. Thank you.
I agree. And I think that this is where we really have to kind of partner with the city as well, right? Because when you're, when you have homes that are running at, you know, $650,000, you know, $700,000, you know, and people are saying in San Bernardino, $650,000 in San Bernardino, you know? So really making sure that the city is, is, is really also kind of, you know, coming along and partnering and, and making San Bernardino a place where, you know, we, we want to purchase homes in for $650,000, $700,000. But anyway, any other comments?
So his neighborhood is $1.5 million.
Oh, there you go.
As I tell my children, we are very mortgage rich. We are not rich. The bank is.
All right. So, um, I think that's it. Thank you so much. I think, um, so I'll go back to the consensus, yes, uh, and.
I, I would ask for consensus. I would be in support of a survey and if we can go down the aisle.
So there, there you have it. I think, um, if you can find, um, companies and maybe present to us before you select one, that way we can, you know.
Well, uh, just to make sure that I understood correctly, I think what we're offering is that we will find two or three people that we feel are qualified and work with the board on the one that they would like to represent the community and then work with that group with the survey to make sure it's reflective of the questions and things that we want asked.
Yes.
Perfect.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. Moving on to 8.2, report audited actuals, financial report for fiscal year 2425. And I'll go ahead and, uh, pass it over to Mr. Koenig.
Oh, good evening again. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. Madam President Sobios, Vice President Grande, uh, Superintendent Ariano, Board of Trustees, our cabinet and the community, uh, watching. I appreciate this opportunity with my team, uh, Mr. Jim Cunningham and our interim, uh, Director of Fiscal Services, uh, Ms. Ossie Kuhnrod. And their teams respectively helped put together the unaudited actuals for the year 2425. And this is one of those interesting things where we have about, in, in, any given school year, we have about three different overlapping budgets that we're either talking about finishing or starting. So even though we're in 2526, we're wrapping up our prior year of 2425. And that last process before it's actually audited is our unaudited actuals. So tonight we are going to talk about the 2425, uh, on audit, uh, unaudited actuals per education code. It reports, uh, the annual statement of both revenues and expenditures uh, of the district for the preceding fiscal year. And in this, uh, presentation, I will, uh, share with you the adopted, uh, budget estimated actuals and an unaudited actuals for both the restricted and unrestricted and then a slide that has them combined. This first slide shares the information related to our unrestricted general fund. And what I wanted to specifically point out to the board are those last two columns that say estimated actuals and unaudited actuals. So as we approach budget development for the 2526 school year, we are, we are winding down that year we're in. And we have something referred to as estimated actuals where we think we're going to land with our revenues and our expenditures. And then through, uh, July and into August, when we're actually closing the books from the prior year, we start to true up our revenues and expenditures. And the point of the brackets was to really draw the attention to the board of the accuracy of our estimated actuals to our unaudited actuals. And I, I attest that very close relationship of, of, uh, outcomes to the due diligence of the staff in both accounting services, fiscal services and purchasing. Um, and you'll notice that from the beginning fund balance, uh, comparison in estimated and unaudited, uh, through revenues, expenditures, and then all the way down to the ending fund balance on line six, where there's just a, uh, $6 million difference to the 101 from the 95 million. Now that 26.1 million that you see for the adopted budget, that was created last June of, uh, 2024. And over that time, we had some budget adjustments. We had an audit adjustment. We had some ESSER funding, uh, spend down because that's from that 2324. So that, uh, low ending fund balance was adjusted, uh, to 95 at estimated. And then we ended up this last fiscal year at almost 102 million unrestricted. This next slide is our restricted and the same, um, brackets and, and point of reference to the due diligence of the team to really get in on the accuracy of the information that we do provide and share with the board and our community as being very intentional. Uh, we, we look for, uh, transparency. We look for accuracy. Um, and I think it, it is something very critical for credibility with the fiduciary, uh, responsibility that we have, uh, as a board of, of trustees and then as a school district to our community that we are tracking and following our, uh, revenues and expenditures very closely. And you can see here that the, uh, ending fund balance, uh, for unaudited is, uh, just short of 170 million. When we go to the next slide, which is the combined version of the unrestricted and restricted, you then see, um, the two slides in effect put together. And where we have a, uh, total ending fund balance of restricted and unrestricted at just under 270 million. And that'll become our, uh, basically our adjusted beginning fund balance. When I come back to you in, uh, December for the first interim, uh, that may, that may change just a, a little bit as, as the dust is still settling. But for the most part, that will probably be close to where we, uh, begin our beginning fund balance. And I'll have additional revenue and expenditure information, uh, at that time in December. Uh, for this presentation, it's, it's a very short and concise, uh, update to the board. However, if there are any additional questions, oh, I did forget the calendar. I apologize. As I mentioned, the first interim is coming up in December. And then already, uh, we've got the 2026 January. Governor Newsom will be providing his 2627, uh, budget proposal. And, um, we, we should have for you the 2425 audited actuals at around that time. So that's where we get those three, um, pots of, of, of years, if you will, that kind of hang around and linger with each other, uh, through the course of, of a given fiscal year. With that, uh, we, Mr. Cunningham and myself are here for any questions or clarifications that the board might have.
Do we have any questions? I don't believe I see any. I just want to, um, I just want to say thank you for, for bringing this forward and just really, um, I, I know we, you know, spoke a little bit about it, but I was really, um, impressed about the accurate, you know, like, like accuracy, right? Between your estimated and audited actuals across the board. So, um, you know, good job, good job there. And no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, board.
All right. 9.0 board discussion. We have 9.1. Oh, Ms. Ms. Alexander, are you still there? Did you have any questions? I apologize for Terry.
Oh, I did not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, 9.0 board discussion. 9.1 Arrowhead United Way's Second Annual Magical Music of Motown Hunger Relief Benefit Concert. And, um, this is a, uh, discussion for a possible sponsorship for, for their, um, for their benefit concert. And I will, uh, go over to Ms. Medina.
Yes, thank you. Um, what I noticed is I, I couldn't find, you know how we're asking organizations, um, to fill out? And I think the other item, there's another board discussion that they did turn it in. And I know there's been a, a few others. Did they submit this one for this one? A question, the, the request?
The Google form you're talking about?
I don't see it here. So I wasn't sure if they submitted it.
Did we receive a Google form for them?
No, we did not. We went with the flyer that said all the, um, money would be donated for the hunger relief fund. So we did not put one out.
That's okay. Um, but I think in future reference, it's because it's like a process that all organizations need to go through, even though if it's repetitive. That way, it's like a process and, and, um, that would be great for all organization. That's why other organizations don't feel like, oh, well, we, we submitted it and they didn't submit one. But, uh, I do appreciate the flyers and the information here. Um, it does help support our, you know, families. It doesn't necessarily, I say, indicate our students, um, through the food drive and all of that. They have actually, they're, they're one of the ones that has the higher, higher, higher. Um, they have like 20,000. Let me see here, where is it? 20,000, 15,000, 10,000. So they're really high. Um, and they have, the lowest one they have is 5,000. It shows that we've contributed 5,000 in the past. I would not go more than 5,000. If that's a recommendation, I would even go less because it's not necessarily directly. It's impacting our families, but it's not necessarily unless, um, I, I know it's, um, I know we've gotten tickets in the past. I'm trying to look where it says more information on how they help support directly our students. Um, through food.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
It is the inland empire. So it's not strictly San Bernardino County.
Oh, it's not the kids.
They do the whole inland empire. So they help, um, students, parents, whatever. But it's from the whole county, not just here.
Yeah, and that's where my concern is, is because we're trying to at least be, at least myself, trying to be mindful of supporting organizations that are directly here. And they are, this is a wrong one. They are, um, asking for their minimum of sponsorship is five. Uh, I could go down to 2,500 if that's something that board members feel comfortable with. Uh, but I definitely wouldn't go higher than five.
Thank you. Um, any, I don't see any, oh, Mr. Tillman?
We give them 5,000 last year? I'm making motion to give them $5,000.
I second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other comments? Before I call for the vote, Mr. Dr. Wyatt?
No, my, my only comment is for Ms. Rosas Medina. And that was, she was asking what the information is. It's on the third attachment down. And then you could go almost towards the bottom of the page. And it says student benefit and public funding compliance, which is kind of nice. Thank you ladies for including that because it shows, um, exactly how it's, um, benefits the kids in our city, which I think is nice for all of us to look at on every, um, form that comes in.
Where is it? I'm sorry, I'm not.
I think it's third attachment down. There's three, there's like five attachments.
I only see four.
Oh, okay.
So you see five?
Uh, one, two, three, four. Yeah, I see five. One, two, three, four. Yeah, I see five. It would be the one, request for sponsorship form. Do you see that one?
I only see four attachments as well.
Not the next one?
Am I looking at the right one?
No, it's where that one, there's another one.
Are you looking at Arrowhead or are you looking at Prism?
Arrowhead.
Oh, my, whoa, I'm on the wrong thing.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a different organization.
All right. Well, when we get to the next one, it's on that one.
Okay. All right. No, that's what I'm saying. They do have one. They have one, but we want to make sure all of the organizations at least provide one. So that way, it's...
Do you have any comments?
I just know last year that when we did this, somebody did give all the things that United Way does for our students, which is pretty substantial.
All righty. So I see no more discussion. So go ahead.
Can I just ask a question? Are we just doing the 5,000? In the past, we did 5,000 and we asked for 30 extra tickets. So I just want to make that.
Which is included with the 5,000 or is that additional?
5,000 is just the sponsorship. But in the past, we said 5,000 plus 30 tickets, and they've always given us the additional tickets.
So the sponsorship doesn't come like with a table or is just the sponsorship?
I'd have to look it up again. I'm not 100% sure.
Oh, I see.
I think so. Yeah. I think you just get there.
Does the 30 tickets included within the 5,000 or we have to purchase those additional tickets?
No, no, no. They would include it with the 5,000.
Oh, yeah, then that would be great.
Currently, they're not included. But in the past, when we sponsored for 5,000, we asked that they also include an additional 30. So what Karen's asking is, do we want to make that request this time around with this sponsorship? Yes.
So we'll check with them and make sure. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you. Dr. Wyatt?
Yeah. And one of my, my biggest concerns, and I'm going to try to voice this every time we bring a sponsorship forward, is that when we buy tickets, I'm hoping that those are given to our families and our kids. If anybody should be attending these events, it should be them before us. I just want to make that very clear. I think we're very fortunate in the positions we're in to be able to have such luxuries, and I'll call them luxuries, to attend such events. But very few people in our town, our city, kids and families will get to go to something like this. And this is, I truly think, and I'll call it an incentive because I don't want to call it a gift, but truly an incentive for our kids to, you know, and our families to work towards and get to go to something. I went last year. We did. Looking Sharpman. I'm Mr. Ariano. I'm looking even better this year. We're going to get more bling this year. But it just makes me so happy when I see our kids and families at this event that they may never even get a chance to go to.
Right. They're like field trips that students don't ever get a chance to go to. So I appreciate that. Yes, the 30 tickets.
Thank you.
Awesome. So I will go ahead and call for the vote. I, I will say we are still currently working on the policy. So, you know, things might change. Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We're moving on to 9.2, I.E. Prism Collective's Lavender Gala.
I will have to step out. I didn't realize that when I read, until I read one of that they're fiscally sponsored by an organization that I'm temporarily contracted with to work at one of their state representations. So I will have to step out, just so you know that that's really the reasons why.
Uh, Dr. Wyatt?
Just wondering, is Ms. Rosales Medina allowed to give any? Is this, because I don't know anything about this organization, if we were sponsoring before.
I, I don't, but...
If you accuse them of social, you can't talk about it.
Yeah. So there is, there is plenty of information attached to this. And for them, I believe Karen or Ms. Nicole sent them the Google Doc. So there is plenty of information there. I believe this is the first time, I, I think it's a newer... I don't know if it's an organization or just the gala itself. It's, it's a new event that we haven't necessarily sponsored this particular event before. So, yeah, take a look at it.
Making motion to sponsor them at $2,500.
Uh, Dr. Wyatt, did you have your light on?
Oh, sorry about that. I think we'd have a motion and a second in discussion, right?
So we have a motion currently. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Did you have a comment, Dr. Wyatt?
Observation and comment. Thank you, Madam President. Just, um, this is our first time doing it. But this, this kind of goes along with what I was talking about on the last particular sponsorship. And this is, and I'm on the third attachment this time. So on the right one. I was on the wrong one last time. We have not approved this event before, but then I go down a little bit more. And it says, well, students attend or participate in an event. It's, no, this is a fundraising event.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going down lower where it says students. How are some of the students selected to attend or receive benefits? SPU students are engaged through a combination of open access and targeted outreach. Prism works closely with our school clubs and community partners to invite students who are interested in leadership development, civic engagement, and wellness programming. So they work with our students.
We won't, we won't be sending any kids or families to this one then. That's what, that's what I'm reading.
Oh, you get 10 tickets.
With the two, 2,500?
Yeah.
I, I guess they could attend then, right?
There's a table for 10 people.
It just, because it says, no, this is a fundraising event. But I think they probably should have clicked, yes, they can maybe participate.
You get 10 tickets.
Okay. So I make sure. Thank you.
Any other comments, Ms. Alexander? No. All righty. We have a motion by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Avalos Grande. Vote, please.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Motion carries. Can somebody text or get Ms. Medina back? I would appreciate that. Thank you. 10.0 action items. 10.1 personnel report.
As presented.
Moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please.
I apologize. I was typing something. Who motioned and seconded?
Dr. Tillman, Mr. Tillman and Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you.
She said I.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. 10.2 approval of district appropriations limit calculations for fiscal year 2425.
Moved. Again.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please, Mrs. Alexander.
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Wyatt? Motion carries. 10.3 approval of the un-audited actuals financial report fiscal year 2425.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please, Mrs. Alexander. You, you were, you were second to the second motion.
Yeah. Aye.
Motion carries. 10.4 resolution of district emergency, district alarm system bid deficiency. Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Santos. Vote, please, Mrs. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries. 10.5 resolution of district emergency sewer line failure at Roosevelt Elementary School.
Moved.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Santos. Vote, please, Mrs. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries. 10.6 resolution establishing and authorizing the district's electric vehicle EV charging fee structure and payment process.
Moved.
Again.
Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please, Mrs. Alexander.
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Wyatt? Motion carries. 10.7 resolution declaring property exempt from the Surplus Land Act and California Environmental Quality Act. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please, Mrs. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I see we're now on 11.0 consent items. Before I go there, did we have policies that were supposed to? It's after the consent items? Oh, there we go. Okay, awesome. Thank you. 11.1 approval of consent list.
Moved.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Santos. Is there any to be pulled? All right, vote. Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to 12.0 reports and comments by union organizations. 12.1 San Bernardino Teachers Association?
No comment.
12.2 California Employees Association?
No comment.
12.3 Communication Workers of America?
No comment.
And 12.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association?
No comment.
Thank you. 13.0 board policies, bylaws, discussion, frustrating. 13.1 approval of bylaw 9330.01 expenditure of public funds to third-party organizations. This was brought to the policy subcommittee to develop a standard protocol for the board to agendaize requests for sponsorships, including establishing amounts for individual board members and the use of a form to obtain relevant details from organizations requesting sponsorships. So hopefully, you had a chance to take a look at it.
I'll motion to, I'm not sure if this, I don't see any lights on. I can motion to approve.
All right. So we have a motion.
Moved. Again.
And we have a second. Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Dr. Wyatt.
I don't think it's, well, Ms. Medina, she didn't say anything with me.
No, I, I motioned it first, but yes. And that's okay. No, it's okay.
Whatever.
A vote, please, Mrs. Alexander?
Nay.
Oh, wait. Do, do we want it discussed? So we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have discussion?
So if there was any, Felicia or Dr. Alex, I mean, Ms. Alexander, if you have any questions or anybody else?
Am I the only one? I can't see lights. My biggest concern is the limitation for the sponsors per board member. The language is, that's the only one where I have a concern and issue.
I, I'm sorry. Yes, you, we brought it up for discussion. That was the main purpose.
Yes.
So did everybody get a chance to take a look at it? I'm sorry, Karen, go ahead.
On, on that, there is an option one and an option two under...
Yes, for annual sponsorship allocation.
Yes. So we would need to decide on that, too.
Thank you. So let me, let me back up a little bit. And let me kind of like talk a little bit about it. So the, the subcommittee has been meeting to try to develop, you know, policy, language, process to, you know, how we receive sponsorships from organizations, what the process to that is. And, you know, we've started to develop a Google form that we will send out to folks. And even, even that Google is not where we want it to be. So we're still making some changes. We're still, you know, adding questions that I think that the board wants to know. And then the other topic was like allocation of funding. So there was, you know, conversation around, you know, do we allocate a lump sum per year on, you know, organizations? Or do we allocate, you know, individual board members, you know, a certain amount of money equally across the board? And so there are two options there that would brought up, that were brought up. So Terry was, Mr. Koenig was asked, you know, what is about the average that we are spending on sponsorships in a year, you know, time? And it came to be about $56,000 for one fiscal year. So if we wanted to allocate it to each board member, it would turn out to be $8,000 per board member. If that's option number one. Option number two was to maybe agree on four to five events to sponsor annually. Maybe these are organizations that the board has, you know, sponsored over the last, you know, five consecutive years, three consecutive years, whatever we decided is, that would add up to, to about 25, $21,000 if we sponsored them. Add $5,000 each if we did four to five events, which would still leave an additional $5,000 per board member to then utilize on a more discretionary basis, obviously still keeping the board policy guidelines and stipulations in mind. So that's kind of the background to it. Do we have any comments, Mr. Tillman?
So you're saying, like we just did tonight, that would be, it'd be different?
Yeah. So we're trying to kind of like align it a little bit different where, where... And, and we, again, the policy subcommittee has been going kind of back and forth on, on how it would best maybe work for all of us. I had in the past expressed my hesitation to, and I had expressed, you know, across the board, I'm just going to vote no. If we don't come up with some sort of guidance or process that, that is, you know, kind of equitable and fair across the board, that we're actually knowing how much we're spending on a yearly basis, that we make sure that the organizations that we are indeed sponsoring are actually supporting our students more directly opposed to, you know, secondary, you know, kind of things like that. That was, that had been my initial request. And so as a result, the, the subcommittee had met. So these are some of the options or the, the conversations that we've had so far. So it would, and, and we're still working on it. Like I said earlier, you know, the Google form is... So it would, and, and we're still working on it, like I said earlier, you know, the Google form is created, but we still wanna fine tune it because it's been occasions where we have used that Google form, and the board still had questions. And so we're trying to really hone in on what exactly does, does the board want to know about these organizations? So that we can create that form, send it out, and then have it come back, and, and so that there's a better, more equitable and consistent process for all organizations.
I do want to add, Mr. Tillman, you can bring still the organizations you want to sponsor. It's still, like, for instance, but it won't be a high amount, of course, it's gonna be at a reasonable, because there's, the option one is that each of us gets $8,000. So let's just say two large organizations might want $4,000 each, then you can bring them forward, you know, someone comes to me and they, I probably wanna do 2,500, and I can, I can contribute more, more organizations in, in that way. Or option two is that you get the four to five events that we've sponsored annually already, and then each board member gets 5,000.
Who said it's four to five?
It's just an example, you can, you can make six or seven, or, you know, whatever.
I think sometimes we lose sight of the value we get from working with our partners, that's what this is. You have a lot of nonprofits that are doing a lot of good work, and we're just affirming that when we give these sponsorships. Every one tonight that we approve is an organization we knew, that we know that does a lot of work for the district. I hate to put it in perspective, but, you know, we're a billion-dollar organization. The amount of money we're talking about is not anything.
Do that, though. You can still contribute, like, for instance, tonight, you would still be able to contribute those.
The point is, I don't understand what's wrong with doing, the way we're doing it. We don't, we don't know the number of people who are gonna come forward every year and say, can you sponsor us? So they send us a letter, we look at it, we consider it, we sponsor it. Why would we want to be in a predicament where we say, oh, no, we did four already, so you're a good organization, you do a whole lot for our kids, but I'm not gonna sponsor you? I don't, I don't get that. What, what do we gain by that? Why would you assign a finite number as to how many organizations we're gonna sponsor?
Oh, no, but like, again, this is just an example, if you suggest that we probably just do maybe six, seven, so right now, there is a, a list that Karen, Ms. Cunningham has already listed of all the organizations we've contributed in the past two years, we could look at.
How many are there?
So, I'm gonna, while you, do you have any, I'm just gonna call order real quick.
I just, I, I didn't know.
Hold on, Mr. Tillman. Yeah, so are you done with your comments?
No, I, I guess it's just, I, I do support, I can support either one, but for me personally, so it's also, we understand. You know, each board member, you know, gets re, and then that's fine, they get, they bring in more sponsorships, and that's fine, because they're, they're, you know, they have these connections and relationships. But the problem is, is that I see sometimes is that it's, it's, I don't think it's equitable across the board on, on, you know, I don't know, I, I just see it, I don't wanna say in a political way, but it, it is, you know, you get organizations to reach out to you, and, and you bring it forward, and, and some of them are really great, but then some of them, I can see that, you know, they're adjusting the language to try to look at how they can get funds from us, and I just feel like we just need to kind of set a standard. And I would be okay with either option one or two, or if maybe someone has suggestions for edits. We do have a motion, we have a second. It's just trying to find out which of those options it would be.
So, yeah, let's, let's finish the discussion. Dr. Wyatt? And then Ms. Alexander, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Madam President. I know that this has been something that I've been concerned with for a number of years, just because I want more transparency with our board and what we bring forward for requests, you know, in regards to equity is always an issue and a concern. I'm not in agreement with either one, either option, I'll say that. I think there's some years where we maybe get more requests and other years where we get less. I, I'll be honest with you, when you were gonna say the total that we've actually allocated for these requests, I thought it was gonna be a couple hundred thousand dollars, or a half million or something, and when we said $56,000, I was like, and I don't mean this in a negative way, I was like, that's not much money. And you hit it right on the head, Mr. Tillman, we're a billion-dollar organization and budget here, and this money goes directly back to our community. Directly, and I make that very clear, I think we all do now, I think that's something that we, we pride ourselves on, is that this money gets reinvested right back into our community and benefits our kids and our families. If we have the ability to do that, I don't see why we would limit ourselves, number one, because there's not a lot of organizations out there that can do that. There just aren't. And when we do it, I'll be honest with you, I take great pride in it, and I love going to these events. I don't get to go to all of them, which I could, and I think, again, I'd rather see other people go, including our staff, too, because I've been to events where we've had empty tables. I know, I mean, Marion Grande went to one, we had two tables for 20 people, and there was four of us. And I was like, I know we could fill these tables with 16 more people from this city, and when we have that opportunity, we need to do it. And again, if it benefits organizations, nonprofits, businesses in this area and in this city, and I'd be very specific about this city, or contributes to this city, then I'm all in, I'm just gonna tell you that right now. I don't, I don't agree with the, either option one or option two. I would say I'm gonna vote no, I'm gonna be very open about it, and say bring something back to the table, but I'm a no.
Ms. Medina?
And, and that's okay. So I think with, for me personally, it's, it's, there's an abuse system, I feel like there's already been an abuse where if we do a better job with those that, if we, that's why I think those questionnaires or requests are very important, is because many organizations don't even, don't organize here, they, they reach out for money here, but they really don't. They're, you know, when they mention San Bernardino County, it's not necessarily just our district. When they mention, I mean, if we were to have it in a way where the sponsorships actually coming from San Bernardino, benefiting our students from San Bernardino, it makes sense. But when it's not, and that's why my frustration is that I have seen abuses of this, and how do we balance that out?
Ms., Mrs. Alexander?
Sure, no problem, thank you, Madam President. One point of order, because I think that the motion that was on the floor did not delineate between option one and option two. So I don't know if you have to open it up again, and then secondly, I'm in agreement with having a process, like the questionnaire, having the agencies or the nonprofits that are requesting funds to follow that process. I am not in agreement with the baseline, I mean, with the, the limitations. I, I feel like, you know, the baseline that Terry did provide us and Mr. Koenig provided us with the $56,000, that's a great number to look at, and definitely one to reference, because that was for two years. So we already have an idea of the organizations that we are consistently supporting, which we would decide as a board if that's what we like to do, but I'm not in agreement to having limitations. But we should be responsible with our disbursements, but having the limitations is what I don't agree with.
Mr. Santos?
I 100% agree with Ms. Alexander, she put it better than I was gonna say. I think we should have criteria, but setting limitations may come back and bite us.
Oh, can I amend my motion?
Yeah, hold on, let me.
I motioned and Scott seconded it, right, and so he, he removed it, I imagine, because he voted no. So I would just put the motion back in for option one, and then, of course, if there's not a vote, there's not enough, there's not a second, that's fine, and then we would just.
Hold on, I just want to add my comments as well before. So this is, this is, you know, if this moves forward, doesn't move forward, like, it really doesn't matter. The whole purpose of it was to bring it before discussion, so this is a starting point, in my opinion, of having that discussion. It's really, for me, an opportunity to get your feedback and say, okay, what would you like to see instead of this? Because what I have shared in the past is, we didn't have anything, we didn't even have a policy before. So, you know, through bringing this up over and over again, you know, we're, we're kind of moving in, in, in a direction, and I didn't expect this to be, you know, the final product. So I hope, you know, as far as that goes, that's clear. I, I agree, I think that there should be a process, I think that there should be a, a procedure that is the same for everyone, kind of like an RFP process, right? It would be something similar, that everybody who is asking for a sponsorship should be able to respond and submit whatever in the same fashion and the same manner. As far as, you know, the amount, Mr. Koenig, was this for one year or two years? Okay, great, even better. So, so, you know, just again, this, this wouldn't prohibit us from even going, this, this wouldn't limit us. It would just keep it in mind, keep the perspective in mind, okay, we've kept ourselves, you know, at the 56,000, or, you know, divide that by two, and if we want to continue to bring forward others, we could still do that. It wouldn't, it wouldn't not allow us to do that. And to kind of answer directly to Mr. Tillman's point, no, we don't all know these organizations, you know. When I first came on the board, I supported some of these organizations to support my colleagues, right? But there are a lot, and that's why I've been one of the people or person who has continuously brought it up, because at some point, I didn't feel comfortable continuing to vote in that way, because I, I didn't know some of the organizations. Some of the organizations I knew of, I had heard of, but I wasn't really completely sure, you know, what it is that they did, or, you know, and I see this more as an opportunity, you know, for organizations to reach out to more different board members, and, you know, kind of, instead of this, maybe instead of the same folks that they go to, maybe now they have to reach out to somebody else and say, hey, you know, we're looking for the sponsorship, let me, let me share with you, you know, who we are, what we have to offer, so that we can continue to build those, those relationships. So those are kind of just my thoughts around that. Mr. Tillman?
I know in the past, people have sent in requests, and, and we denied it. We didn't sponsor it, because no one here said this is something that we want to sponsor. If someone does say they want to sponsor it, and a board member doesn't want to, you can make a statement by voting no. I think the process works. But, but I, but I, I don't want us to lose sight of the relationship building we do by doing these sponsorships. It's not something that we don't get something back, other than, you know, having the students, a lot of the students get stuff from these organizations, some of them get scholarships from the organization, but, but you can't place a value on the relationship building that we're doing, and there's gonna be new organizations, some organizations will fold and go away, so it's never gonna be an exact amount every year that we give, but I think the, the way the process works right now, and this is a new policy that we've been doing lately, where the person submits it, somebody champions it, you try to get the votes to get the sponsorship. If you don't get the votes, you don't get the sponsorship. I hear you guys saying that you don't like the political part of being board members and being able to say, this is something I sponsor, and I want you to support it. The one tonight that I led and made a motion of, is because, you know, the, the folks that said, hey, they knew about it, and said they, they do do good things for our students, it was in the, the back, the backup. I had never heard of the organization before, but based on the folks I talked to, feel like it's, it's the organization that does good by our kids. I don't see how that is a bad thing. I think we should continue it, and I don't think there should be any limits. Some years you're gonna spend more, some years you're gonna spend less, but I think the amount we spend is well worth the value that we get by supporting these organizations that work with us. The last time we had United Way, and we tabled it, and we had them come talk to us about what they did, they do all kinds of stuff for our kids. A lot of times we don't know about it, but they're giving all types of services, because they're getting a lot of stuff volunteered to them and in-kind stuff, and they're giving it directly to our kids, that's way worth more than this, the $5,000 we gave them a night. They, they give hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of value back to our students, and I don't think we should lose sight of that.
Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President, just three things, and I want to be very clear on, one, I am absolute in agreement with the sponsorship form and explanation. Matter of fact, I know that started when I was board president, because I wanted more transparency, so I'm in agreement with that, I'll make sure that's clear to the public as well. And actually, on these two options, there is a limit. When it says not to exceed $8,000, total 56,000, that means not to exceed. Same thing on number two, not to exceed 21,000, then plus 5,000 each for 56,000, so there is limits on each option there. And then the, the last piece is, and, and in all transparency, we, we should have a list available to the public that shows exactly who we gave money to. I mean, that's a simple thing to have. It's a simple accounting issue, just to create a spreadsheet that says, you're 2023, 2024, 25, 26, this is who we gave to, this is how much. I mean, to me, that's just keeping it out in the open, so if we ever want to ask, we know. If anybody outside in the public wants to know, it's right there available. So to me, make it transparent, make it an open conversation for all of us, which we've done. And, and I'm asking not to put a limit on it, because new organizations may come, as Mr. Tillman said, and others may fall off. But again, what I, what I don't want to do is not support our community and our organizations, support our kids in our city. That, I, I've learned that to be an incredible gift that we're able to do as a board and as a board member, I take great pride in that. I really do, because I see the great things that people do in this city, in this community, and we should be highlighting that and building on those organizations, building on them, and it might be something I'm not in agreement with completely, but if it's something that's good for kids and people in our city, and that my colleagues on this board agree with, I'm gonna support that, because I would hope the same for me when I ask for support, so those are my comments, thank you, my ending comments.
All right, so those were all the comments that came up, and those that I had as well, so I, please help me out here a little bit in terms of the, how to move forward. Okay, okay, so there was the motion, and then there was a second, but he, Dr. Wyatt voted no or retracted.
I went ahead and just removed that vote, because they voted before they discussed, so I think we should just start over.
I submitted a motion after the fact, and then to see if there was a second, and.
So what was your motion to do option one?
So I can, I can motion to approve option, let me see here. Option one? No, option two, I'll, I'll just do two, you know, most likely it's not gonna pass anyways. But option two, with the fact that we can select five, and I would amend it to select seven to eight organizations, and then each board member gets 8,000 for each fiscal year, so each year they can, you know, sponsor certain groups. And I, and I, that's my motion. And then I do want to kind of mention that, at the end of the day, this, like you mentioned, Ms. Abayos, is, it's regarding accountability. I've been, I, I've been seeing a lot more recently, and then in the past, but then, as Mr. Tillman mentioned, you know, before, you know, the superintendent or the, the district would be submitting these, not, not our superintendent, but in past time. Now we're getting it, because the public are seeing that we're sponsoring more organizations, we're getting more application, and more individuals that, and, and for me, it's, if you live within our city, if you are supporting our students, great, let's support it. But I think what I'm starting to see now is people that don't live within our area and are benefiting from the money we're, we're providing them. And a lot of times, it's a moneymaker, for me personally, for those organizations that they create events, they take a, you know, they pay themselves some portion, because they are creating the events, the fundraisers, it helps benefit them, too. And it does help benefit the community, but it's not all of it, and so, so it's just me personally. But I would go with that amended option, option two. If there's a second, great, if there's not, then that's, that's fine. But I still would like for the committee to meet on the accountabilities and making sure that that organizations that meet with our students here are priority.
I have a motion to do seven to eight organizations, and each board member gets, instead of five, up to 8,000 per year. Do I have a second? I'll second that motion. So we have, we have a motion by Ms. Medina, a second by myself, and then vote.
Just a real quick question, are we doing this as a first reading, and I'm bringing it back for the final, or is this?
We're gonna do it as a final reading, I imagine, just because. We're going to do it as a final reading, I imagine, just because it doesn't seem like it, you know?
Okay.
Right? Let me think about that, let me think about that real quick. If it, if it doesn't pass, we're still going to send it back to subcommittee. Yes, okay, let's do that. Oh, Mrs. Alexander?
Yeah, I have called the question, actually. We received a list of path of, of organizations we've sponsored. And that list was larger than seven organizations. So is it something we can consider by saying, just taking consideration those sponsored, the ones that we've already sponsored, and then set the limitation for eight thousand versus saying less than what we've sponsored these past two years? Because as a committee, we did agree that those would be considered because we have sponsored them. So I'm just wondering if that could be a consideration versus limiting it to seven organizations?
Oh, so I have a, I've been, I've been corrected. We are past discussion and we're on the vote. So you can either do a substitution motion, is that possible, or no? We just vote? Okay, okay, so yeah.
I'm going to have to say no.
Okay.
So I don't have anything for Mr. Tillman, Ms. Grande? It didn't come up? Okay, can you just do?
Yeah, Mr. Santos? Hold on, Mr. Santos? Okay, Dr. Wyatt?
Mine?
Mine's nay.
And Ms. Avalas? Dr. Tillman? Or Mr. I keep calling you. Ms. Medina?
Aye.
It was, I'm sorry, no? Okay. And I got it, okay, I got it.
Mr. Tillman?
I can motion to table this item?
No, 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 you were on, we're, yeah.
I thought the vote was done.
No, yeah.
It didn't pass.
Listen, it's not coming up.
It didn't pass.
It didn't pass.
Okay, motion didn't pass, so thirteen point two approval by law, ninety-one fifty student board members compensation. So this is a by law, the board will review revisions to by law ninety-one fifty student board members as reviewed by the policy subcommittee on September ten, twenty-twenty-five. Revisions reviewed were lined out and/or in bold red. No other changes were recommended by the policy subcommittee members at this time. If additional revisions are required, they will be made and resubmitted for final board approval at an upcoming board meeting. If no changes are required at this time and the board is in agreement, then it can be adopted without a second reading. So I'm going to go to Mr. Tillman first.
Just for clarification, it says student board members shall receive compensation of hundred and fifty dash two hundred. What does that mean? Why don't we just pick a number, is it two hundred or hundred and fifty?
So we left it open for discussion, so we could either do a hundred and fifty or two hundred is what the subcommittee was recommending.
I'm making a motion to approve it at two hundred dollars.
We're... The intention was to discuss, so can we hold on that motion? Right, but I don't know if anybody else wants to comment. Okay, so let me get back to you, Mr. Tillman, Ms. Medina?
All right, great, thank you. Sorry, I skipped. So, no, the reason why I, I was asking to see if there was any other school districts and, and what they contributed. And so one fifty was what, like for instance, Oakland, oh, not Oakland, it was Consta contra? Consta, yeah. So, so that's where the range that I pushed for was one fifty. But I'm okay with the two hundred if that's the idea. But my thing was looking at what other school districts was doing, and I saw the one fifty. But we don't even get that. I'm just saying, yeah, we don't even get that as board members. All right, but that's one of the reasons why I moved to include one fifty.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I, I noticed some bills going through, an assembly bill that is on the floor, and I think it's going to be approved, but it's going to just pay for, or potentially just pay for board members, I said. Is that also, I think, I don't know if that applies to school board members as well? And that's why I'm bringing it up, because it actually, there, there's a bill right now that's going through, and it'll probably pass. And then I don't know if it's up to the board to determine on board member pay compensation. And I could pull it up, because I had it on my phone earlier. But I don't know if it also applies to school board members, because it sets a range. It sets a range that we can utilize in regards to how we compensate ourselves and student board members, I believe. But I, I'd be in agreement with two hundred, I'll just say that right now. But there is potential law that may impact our students just as well as us. So I just want to make sure that if that's the case, we visit that and make sure. And I, I could give you the, the specific bill in just a little bit here, I could look it up. But that's my comment right now, but I'll get the bill for us.
Any other comments, Mrs. Alexander? Do you have any comments? No? Okay, if we, that information's great, Dr. Wyatt, and if you can forward us that information, I think, I think that you had already shared it with me in the past. But for the purposes of, you know, got it, for the purposes of, the reason we decided to bring this forward is because, you know, the school year has already started and board members have already, student board members have already started attending meetings and participating. And so we want to make sure that, you know, if we are going to move forward with it, that we, we will approve it so that, you know, Terry can go ahead and, you know, release, release those payments to students. So if that does impact our student board members, we could always bring this back. So going back to Mr. Tillman, did you want to?
My motion was to approve it at two hundred dollar level.
All right, do I have a second for that? Okay, second by Ms. Avalas Grande? And vote please, Mrs. Alexander.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Tillman, did yours not come up again?
Motion carries and fourteen point O reports and comments, fourteen point one board members. And I will go ahead and begin with Ms. Medina.
Just wanted to say Feliz Dia de Independencia de México, and for dieciséis de septiembre, I also, this past, this past, actually it was on Friday, I presented, co-presented with Ed Trust West and Latino, bilingual Latino organization. And it was on educator diversity and increasing the amount of students who go into teaching and how, you know, student population reflects with the teacher population and how we encourage more folks. And I did share great things that we're doing. We're one of the few districts that are doing the educator pathway. You know, we do have, and I, and I, and I think Mr. Ariano for correcting me on, on student teaching mentors. So as a student teaching mentors, I would still like, love to see how we can incorporate even those students that are within our, who are former students that are going into teaching field. Because during that education portion, if we want to, we want to retain, you know, our, the diversity, you have to provide incentives for them to continue because it is a field that takes a lot of fun. So I do appreciate that we did, we did share the information with UC Riverside and the great funding opportunities there. So that was just one of the presentations that I co-lead, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alexander?
Sure, thank you. Just wanted to wish the Mr. and Mrs. Cardinal contestants good luck on Saturday. I had an opportunity along with Mary Ellen and Kim Ariano to be able to interview them yesterday, along with some other judges. And we have some really great students. The scholars, both the ones running for Ms. Cardinal and Mr. Cardinal did a great job in their interviews. So I know that Saturday is going to be amazing. I also have one question related to the questionnaire that went out to the families in the district just identifying their, where they stand with housing to be able to identify what resources they might need. Just wanted to see if maybe on the Friday update, if we can find out, are we working with the city? I, I realize that this is focusing on our community and our students, but the city also has resources and just want to see with the bridge committee if we're going to be working with them to be able to make sure that we're maximizing all the support that we can provide for our students. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Thank you, Ms. Avalas Grande.
Thank you, I, I noticed since I became a new school board member, it's been like a long year or two now, how long do I have left now? An hour left? Okay, so, so I noticed that I've been to all these conferences and, and conventions and workshops and masters in government, and it's been wonderful. And yet I see others go and come, and we never give a report. So I moved today to give you a report on, I say, the most exciting and best conference I've been to in my short time here with you. So bear with me, I'll try to be brief, but it won't be. Colleagues, I want to take a few minutes to share something that really struck me.
Want to order?
Yes.
Just saying for report, I'm just playing, go ahead.
Thank you. He startled me, I go, shoot. All right, thank you. He caught me. Colleagues, I want to take a few minutes more to share anything, something that really struck me. I recently attended the Council for Urban School Boards Conference in Los Angeles. It's held in different areas, and I came back not just impressed, but genuinely inspired. I've been to many conferences, including NSBA and the other subgroups, the African-American councils and the Latino councils and, and more. And those all have their value, but this one was different. It hit every mark for districts exactly our size and larger. Now, different from the other ones because they, they all do important work, but they often cast a very broad net, and sometimes the issues feel more national or generalized. This conference geared in on districts like us facing the exact same budget pressures, governance questions, and community expectations we face. It was in theory, it was practical, tailored, and directly relevant. As far as the content and speakers, the ideas weren't recycled or vague. They were fresh, different, and squarely focused on the most pressing issues in districts like ours. Student achievement gaps, balancing equity with fiscal responsibility, AI, board governance in divided communities, teacher pipeline challenges. The speakers, in a word, phenomenal, short, sharp, relevant, every single one connected to truth, to the realities we live every day as trustees. They didn't waste time, no endless panels, just powerful sessions that cut right to the heart of the challenges. Do you know how many types of audits there are in the school district? Can you guess? Does anyone know for sure? I know, you're all guessing, right? Like there's at least four or five, and sometimes more individual ones. They were very interesting to find out. I learned new questions to ask, and so stay tuned on that. The impact on us, for our newer, our three newer members, this is exactly the kind of professional growth that builds confidence and accelerates their ability to govern effectively. For our veteran leadership, it's an opportunity to bring decades of wisdom into fresh conversations and pass that on while also staying renewed and energized. For all of us together, it's a chance to unify, to come back aligned with shared tools, shared language, and shared vision. Yes, I know we are watching expenditures carefully, but this is not a luxury, it's an investment. The cost of one conference pales in comparison to the cost of a misstep, a compliance issue, or a failed initiative. This investment pays us back many times over in the clarity and effectiveness it brings. In closing, and in short, which it wasn't, this wasn't just another conference. It was the right one at the right time for districts like ours. We have three newer members eager to grow, I'm sure, longstanding leaders, ready to energize, I believe, and a community that needs us to lead with vision. I believe a membership in this organization and conference participation could be the spark that, that elevates our governance, strengthens our unity, and ultimately will benefit the students and family we serve. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President, and just want to say, you know, on, on kind of heels of Ms. Grande here that, you know, and I know some of my colleagues here, and they've been quite humble. I believe Ms. Rosas Medina presented this weekend at CLSBA, California Team School Board Association meeting. And I was very fortunate as well, and say thank you to the district for, you know, enabling us to do that. And I know President Sabayos was there as well, supporting us out in the crowd. And, you know, it goes right along the lines of some of our major conversations this evening in regards to equity in action and governing with a purpose across county and district lines. You know, I, I was a guy, we had an amazing team, Mr. Jesus Holguin, many of you know who he is. He served at CSBA president, which is just unbelievable to be at that level of governance, as well as Dr. Bettors and Dr. English, who are also both local electeds. And we really focused on how we could leverage our experience and funding to benefit our students, our communities. And I talked a lot about what we've done here in city schools, and I think it's absolutely amazing how we take the money that, you know, we're able to get, whether it's from a bond or from our, our general fund or different grants, and applied in a manner that benefits students in our city at the highest level. You know, Mr. Ariano, you say what goes with the, how, as a school district goes, the city goes. And, and I'm going to keep saying that and believing in it, and that's why I'm really big on just taking our facilities and our schools to the highest level to when people do pull up and they want to spend seven, eight hundred thousand dollars or one point five million dollars in this city, they could say, look at these amazing schools that my kids go to. Number one, not just that, but also the quality of education they're getting, the CTE courses they're going, the arts programs, the school programs. We just had a state champion in stage management, don't even know what that means, but I learned a little bit today. Wow, I mean, I didn't know that, and we had a national champion, again, in our city, right here in Samyel City. So just an amazing conference, and, you know, my colleagues at Bess is, you know, we need to take this on the roadshow and talk about more what we do here in our county and our cities. So thank you again to my colleagues that were there, as well as the district. The bill I was talking about was AB thirteen ninety, just so you know, Assembly Bill thirteen ninety. It is on the floor of the Senate right now for approval, and then it'll go to the governor's desk for signature. What it does stay in there, and thank you, Ms. Santos, she was helping me do some research over here, was that the board could either assign credit to the students or monetary compensation. Okay, so we have that option, sounds like going monetary, I agree on that because credit's kind of a little bit more complex in regards to how much work they have to do to earn credit. But it didn't say a standard yet, it may be coming, we don't know. So that, that is the bill that was asked. And then, you know, we were talking a lot about bonds and facilities, and every time, I got colleagues that work there that know, I just love this stuff. So I'm going to do it again, American School and University Facilities, Buildings and Facilities, Samyel City, again, nationally ranked and recognized. For those of you that don't know, this is probably about the fifth or sixth magazine I've gotten since I've been on the board. I have a collection in my office, if you ever want to see them or have them bring to the meeting that you want to see, because this is where our money goes. Okay, when we talk about how we take our funding and we apply it to facilities, and as we would say, world-class, and this is world-class. One of them was the new San Bernardino High School Theater, which has an amazing blend of old and new. And it just, I just love that one, it's probably my favorite one now. And then the other one was our medical facility, CTE program at Pacific High School. And if you haven't been there, you need to go, because again, it's second to none. I, I mean, so this is what we do when we apply I mean, so this is what we do when we apply funding and money in the right way, and we get recognized, again, at a national level. So if somebody wants to come here and spend money in San Bernardino, this is why you should, because we have world-class facilities here for our kids, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt, Ms. Santos.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to, you know, this week, or actually last week, on Monday, I went to visit our Conference of Comprehensive High Schools College Centers. Started out at a Royal High School, and their whole team was out there, their principal, and it was great to see what our college, college and career centers are looking like. So worked at all, I worked, went to all of the high schools, they all did an awesome job. Wanted to highlight Ms. Maria at Pacific, she had such passion when she was describing how she works with parents and students. But all our college and career centers were awesome. And then today I had the opportunity to go to the Ucan HBCU College Fair, which I thought was a wonderful event, we have a lot of students there. I'm going to have to apologize, there was a parent there whose daughter goes to Kimbark, but she wanted her daughter to see, I forgot her name. Oh, Ms. Cooper, thank you, see? I'm horrible with names, this politician thing, I'm not great at it. But anyways, wanted to shout her out, because she had her daughter out there looking at the, at the colleges, which I thought was a wonderful and great thing. And then reminding the community that our college fair is also this Thursday at the Inland Center Mall. And, you know, it's, college fairs are designed for seniors as they begin that application process. But anyone, an elementary school student, a middle school student, any grade in high school, it's great to go out there, see what those college requirements are, get some wonderful stuff out from the colleges, so you could see what those colleges look like from their publications. But again, that was all I have. And I just learned we had a clock, I didn't even know we had a clock.
No, Mr. Santos, thank God, because you don't go over five minutes, that's why. You haven't had here the secret beeper.
Nobody has cut you off yet. Awesome, I, I just want to also just take a moment to say Feliz Dia de Independencia for Mexico. I know today is the actual day, and then actually is my sister's birthday as well. True Mexican, right? Yeah, and I also, you know, want to, want to just say, I truly, truly appreciate you all, my colleagues here on the Board. I really appreciate the conversations, you know, that we have, you know, behind closed doors, and even here in the open, and, you know, as evidenced today, we may not agree on, you know, how to, you know, what we want, or, you know, things like that. But, but I think, I feel really good, even with, even without the policy passing. I actually feel really good and really great, because we had a really good conversation around it. And again, I think we all just want the best for, for our students and for the community. And so I really just, I don't say this enough, but I really do want to say thank you, and, you know, just want you to know how much I truly do appreciate each and every one of you. I also wanted to, you know, as Dr. Wyatt has already mentioned, we were at CLSBA this past week/weekend. And I just wanted to also share, it was, it was a really good conference. I attended both presentations, you know, the one that Ms. Medina was doing and Dr. Wyatt as well. And I really enjoyed myself there in the audience, listening to, you know, what they had to say and what they had to present. But I also really appreciated a couple other sessions that I attended. For example, there was one called From Crisis to Solution, Twin Rivers USD's 11 million investment in teacher housing as a model for educational excellence. There was a great nonprofit organization, foundation there, that really kind of, you know, explained part of, part of what they're doing over there in Twin Rivers USD. And, you know, as, if the Board, you know, decides that this is the direction that we want to go, you know, into, I think that, you know, they would be a really good source to kind of reach out to and kind of find out, you know, what they're doing, how they're doing it, and so forth. Another session that I attended that I found really great as well was, it was titled, "We Can't Control Everything During This Crisis, But We Can Prepare to Protect Our Students and Communities." And this one was around immigration and how to be prepared. You know, Del Sol Group, Alma Marquez, Lisa Ramirez, Aida Macedo were the presenters. And it was really, really informational. And I think I'm, I'm going to be sharing some of this with, you know, our superintendent cabinet, because I think we do, we can do more, and I think we should be doing more. You know, even from the comments, public comments that we heard today in regards to, you know, what happened a month and a half ago, or a month ago, by San Bernardino High School. And so I think there is, there's areas of improvement there as well. And yeah, just the whole conference, you know, talked about unity, and that was, you know, kind of the overall theme around it. So really, really great, great time and space for us to, you know, learn and connect, and continue to, you know, be unified. And I think, I think those were all my comments. So I will pass it on to, Unidos en Acción was the title of the, of the, yes, you're right, thank you, Dr. Wyatt. And I think Mr. Santos forgot something.
I did, and it was a big one. I wanted to thank Dr. Suda Vedekatessen and her team for taking me out to the College and Career Center. So a great thank you for her team taking time to take me out to see all the, our six college centers at the, our comprehensive high schools. So thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. And then, Mr. Ariano?
Thank you, President Sevaios. I'm going to concur with your statement. We have a great Board, great Cabinet, great synergy in this district. So thank you for making those comments, because I completely concur that we have a wonderful energy going on in this district, and the people in the community see that. Terry, I want to thank you and your team today for two wonderful presentations. I appreciated the honesty, the transparency, and just giving the Board exactly what they asked, right? And us receiving direction. So thank you to you and your team for everything that you put together for today. So I just wanted to make a few highlights, many of the things that were mentioned today, but I have pictures. So it was mentioned today about Eva Bogarin, who was from San G, a senior with a 4.8 GPA. Each of the 32 NFL schools got to pick one male and female student to celebrate as a Latino youth award recipient. And so our student from San G, the daughter of Adam Bogarin, who's a program specialist in our Swiss department, was selected by the Los Angeles Rams. And that's a picture of her and her daughter, so we're, her and her father. So we're very, very proud of her, and of course, we all know the Rams are the best NFL team. So, right, 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 did I get a little hoo-hoo here? No? All right, next slide. This one is my favorite topic today, this is beautiful. So at our District African-American Parent Advisory Committee, Director Will Greer, Program Specialist Lawrence Hardy, connected with our Adult Education Program with Principal Raul Pedraza and Jean Carranza, the Vice Principal, to bring our student barber programs to the APAC, Day PAC Committee and provide haircuts prior to the meeting. I just thought that was just a wonderful idea, where two of our departments come together to serve the best interests of our community. So kudos to Dr. Greer, to Lawrence, to Mr. Pedraza and Mr. Carranza. What a great idea, I love it, bringing our community together, great job, everybody, on that one. Next slide. And I too want to brag a little bit about our Board of Education. They help us shine out in the community and across the state. So I appreciate that, you know, Myra Sevaios and Dr. Scott Wyatt and Abigail attended the California Latino School Board Association, the Unity Conference in San Diego. I heard a lot of great feedback on Dr. Wyatt's presentation that was titled Equity in Action, Governing with Purpose Across County and District Lines. And then Mrs. Medina also presented Local Impact, Statewide Change, the California Educator Diversity Network effort towards a more diverse educator workforce. So thank you all for representing our district well, for sharing your wisdom, and like, like Mary Ellen said, for making the effort to continue to learn and grow as a Board Member. So kudos to all of you, appreciate it. Next slide. And of course, you know, I got to get Mary Ellen in there. You know, she attended the Council of Urban Boards of Education in Los Angeles, Qube. And Mary Ellen came back excited, man, she started giving me new research I had to read, prospective speakers I need to bring in, and effective programs that I need to reach out to. But that's what's great about these conferences, right? Is you get to find best practices that either we can emulate here, or we get to share the best practices, and some other district gets to learn from us. So thank you, Board, for your continued effort. Next slide. If you remember, Scott Smith, our Program Specialist in Physical Education, is building on the model that Terry and Marcus had put together in putting together the department softball game, which created a lot of unity, brought family together. So Scott is committed to putting together four district events. The first one happened this last weekend, it was the cornhole competition. And here are the winners. Third place was Joe Burton and Shinad Fongame from IT Department. Second place was John Applegate and Brian St. George, St. George from the IT Department. And first place was who you see there, Scott Smith and Paul Locke from Secondary Education. So it was a great event to bring employees together on the weekend and their families. Good stuff's happening. The next event is October 25th at Del Valle, and it's pickleball. So there's different divisions, I'm going to play in the novice, and the senior in the novice. Mr. Tillman and I are going to take on, you ready, Mr. Tillman, to play pickleball?
I don't hurt people feelings anymore, I don't play.
Let's do races, I would race.
But hey, I invite, if anybody on the Board wants to team up, to be part of the pickleball, let us know. It's just a fun day. I barely started learning how to play, but I just want to get out there, have fun, and interact with, and learn people from, get to know people from the district. So thank you, Scott Smith, for your effort, really appreciate it, looking forward to the next one. Next slide. And then today, I had the opportunity to be at San Andreas High School. Stater Brothers presented our Growing Hope Farm Program with a $20,000 check to continue the program and support our adult transition program. So I want to thank Principal Dory Stratton. I want to thank Barbara Passa Check. I didn't realize that this program was her vision many years ago. And so I thanked her there at the time, she was there at present. And I want to thank Jennifer Mann. Jennifer Mann is a paraprofessional there, who I actually went to high school with. So I knew her from high school, Samhail High School. And she was the one that made the connection with Stater Brothers to have them understand the great things that are happening there. And they turned around and provided us $20,000, and committed to even more moving forward, because they love the program. So I just want to say to Stater Brothers, thank you for your support of our schools, and that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Wow, that's truly, truly amazing, thank you for that report. 15.0 summary of Board Members' requests, 15.1 review of requests.
Good evening, Board. I am sitting in for Ms. Ballantag this evening. And the first request we have is from Ms. Rosales Medina. And it was regarding the bond presentation. Requested consensus for the survey to hear from the community regarding the bond, and consensus was given. Mr. Tillman requested that the survey reflect the community, and that it is done by a reputable bond specialist, or not, not done by a bond specialist, but a survey specialist, asking people about their concerns. Ms. Alexander requested information on the residency survey that went out, and whether or not we are partnering with the city to offer available resources. And that is all I have.
Awesome, thank you so much, 16.0, meaning adjournment?
Moved.
Some, that's moved and second. Have a good night, everyone.